All right. Thank you, Rick. Appreciate that. And thank you to everybody for getting us on here. And thank you to everyone who's joining us for the Township Council Conference Meeting for April 5th, 2022. This is a conference meeting of the Council of the Township of Montclair and is being broadcast live on Channel 34 and is streaming live on Montclair TV 34 YouTube channel. It is available on demand and can will be rebroadcast. This meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting was included in the annual notice of the meeting schedule as set forth in Resolution R 21210, adopted by the Town Council at its conference meeting on November 15th, 2021, advertised in the official newspaper on December 30th, 2021, and January 6th, 2022, posted on the bulletin boards outside the municipal building and has remained continuously posted. In addition, a copy of the annual notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the office of the Township Clerk. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Roll call, please.
Counselor Cummings.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Herlock.
Present.
Counselor Price Abrams.
Present.
Counselor Russo.
Present.
Counselor Schlegel.
Here.
Counselor Yakabelis.
Present.
Mayor Spiller.
Present. Thank you. We'll move the agenda with flexibility. We'll move to approval of the minutes. There have been presented to us the minutes of November 1st, 2021, and November 15th, 2021. Are there any corrections or additions? Seeing none, I so move.
Second.
So moved in seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Post extension, extensions. Okay, thank you very much, Seaman. Next, we have a proclamation declaring April 16th through 2023rd, 2022 as Earth Day Celebration Week. Counselor and Price Abrams, would you please do the honors?
Thank you, Mayor. I take a special pride and satisfaction in Earth Day, and thank you for the opportunity to read this. The proclamation, Earth Day Celebration Week, April 16th to 23rd. Whereas on April 22nd, 1970, over 20 million Americans came together to celebrate the first Earth Day. Students, teachers, activists, elected officials, and countless others came together to confront our most urgent environmental issues and rallied for change. And whereas the months and years that followed, in the months and years that followed, it led to the creation of the United States Environmental Protection Agency and the passage of other environmental laws, including the National Environmental Education Act, the Occupational Safety and Health Act, the Clean Air Act, and Clean Water Act. These laws protected millions of men, women, children, and animals from disease and death. And whereas on the 20th anniversary of Earth Day, more than 200 million people in 141 countries participated in Earth Day celebrations. These celebrations raised awareness and boosted recycling efforts globally. And whereas over half a century later, this legacy continues to live on and people across the world are rising and demanding that action be taken on climate change. Activities such as outdoor walks, lectures, exhibits, competitions, tours, and recycling collections are promoted to raise awareness on environmental issues. And where stewardship projects such as litter and trash cleanups, tree planting, trail maintenance, removal of invasive species, repair and construction activities, and gardening are coordinated to encourage others to take action and create positive environmental change. And whereas New Jersey is the third state in the country to consolidate its natural resources and environmental quality programs into a single state agency charged with administering aggressive environmental and conservation efforts. Since the United States' first official Earth Day on April 22nd, 1970, the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection began its role of managing the state's natural resources and addressing challenges to air quality, water resources, land use, and waste management. And whereas Montclair advocacy groups, committees, and residents have taken strides toward those efforts by coordinating virtual and in-person lectures about environmental projects, eco-friendly gardening, alternative transportation and climate change activism. Other initiatives include cleanups at 15 Montclair Parks and green spaces across the four wards. And whereas, as the Montclair community commemorates Earth Day, we reflect on the challenges that remain before us and recommit to the spirit of togetherness and shared responsibility and encourage all businesses, institutions, and individuals to celebrate the earth and commit to caring for the planet and its resources. Now therefore, the mayor and council of the Township of Montclair do hereby proclaim April 16th to 23rd, 2022, Earth Day Celebration Week in the Township of Montclair and encourage all of its citizens, businesses, and institutions to use Earth Day to celebrate the earth and promote greater understanding of environmental and climate literacy. And I so move.
Thank you. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Uh, thank you, Councilwoman, and certainly, um, you know, we know there's still much work to be done. Still important, uh, work that has been done. We have to acknowledge that. Uh, and certainly, uh, very proud of the efforts here in Montclair uh, on that front in terms of some of the big projects we've done and some of the smaller pieces as well. Uh, on behalf of the broader system itself with the municipality and certainly residents also doing their part. So really, uh, really wonderful in the efforts that we have trying to be ahead of the curve even with the state. Um, but, uh, we know there's again, a lot to do and a lot on the line. So, but thank you, Councilwoman. Appreciate that. Okay, next, in an effort to minimize exposure to COVID-19 and to maintain social distancing practices, this March 15th council meeting and further meetings until, uh, next month, by the way, will be available to the public remotely. Those who wish to participate now during public comment should dial into 408-418-9388. When asked to enter an access code, please enter 233-261-3270, then press pound. When asked to enter an attendee number, please simply press pound. When asked to state your name, please do so and press pound. The administrator will then say when is the caller's turn to speak and the caller will then hear two beeps. At that time, the caller will have an opportunity to make his or her comment. Mr. Stafford, Mr. Fan, I turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. First up would be caller with the number starting 973-222. It is your turn to comment. 973-222, please, for the record, state your name. Keep your comments to three minutes and mute your listening device.
Charlie Swanson. Hello, this is Charlie Swanson.
Yes, sir, we can hear you.
I'm sorry?
We can hear you, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. I couldn't hear. This is Charlie Swanson. Good evening, Montclarians. I am a 76-year-old senior citizen. I lived here since 1975. I am an owner of small multifamily homes in the second and fourth wards. I am in total support of the letters and comments to the council from Carmel Logman and Eric Brahm. I hope you read them again. I am disappointed in my town council. That having been said, I want to thank the three council members that had taken the time and courtesy to respond to my letter. You know who you are. Small property owners are not the Goliaths of regional real estate in our town. Most of us manage our properties below market rents. I have verily rarely raised rents and my tenants stay with me a long time. We are like family. Small property owners and small property developers of two, three, and four-family homes are the backbone of integrated and regenerated neighborhoods. Most of us did not oppose the original ordinance because it did not affect us until the last minute, when with no notice to us, we found about it by word of mouth at the towns council meeting scheduled for at 11:45 PM on a Friday night. At least that was changed to 5:30 PM on Monday last week. I would like to point out that my three and four-family houses are already subject to State Hotel and Multiple Dwelling Act, which requires that we register with the state, that we comply with their regulations, and that the state inspects our properties every five years. We don't need another layer of inspections. I feel we've been left out of this conversation as small property owners. Please, please, let's take the time to get this right with the proper loan and affordable housing programs that serve and protect and the diversity of all our great town residents. Thank you.
Next would be caller with the number starting 646-339. It is your turn to comment. 646-339, please, for the record, state your name, mute your listening device, and keep your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Amon DiMello, and I live in the third ward. I'm on the Board of Directors of the Montclair Public Library Foundation, and today I'm speaking on their behalf. First, I'd like to recognize with great gratitude the work of the council and the library trustees for securing ancillary funding for the library in the 2022 budget. We appreciate the challenge of balancing so many competing demands, but I know I speak for many when I say that a fully functioning library is a necessity, not a luxury. By restoring the library's hours, you have helped provide crucial services to all members of this community. Thank you. Coincidentally enough, I'm speaking to you during National Library Week, an annual celebration of libraries and library workers and the many benefits they bring to our citizens and our towns. This year's theme, Connect With Your Library, underscores the fact that the Montclair Public Library is not merely a repository of books and magazines. It connects the people of Montclair to broadband, computers, Wi-Fi hotspots, and other crucial digital resources. It connects us to opportunities to grow as humans and thinkers with adult education courses and conversations with leading authors. And it connects us with one another by providing a community resource where everyone can come together with open minds. We are celebrating National Library Week with our Buy a Book Challenge. We are asking donors to help us raise funds for new materials in the children's department, including books, audiobooks, and other resources that promote literacy and support young readers, including those with dyslexia or other reading challenges. A donation of $20 will pay for a new book and $50 will support the purchase of an ebook or audiobook. We're extremely fortunate to have a generous donor who has agreed to match each contribution during National Library Week. Our goal is to provide 500 new books to the library, and we are already well on our way. Once again, thank you all for your ongoing support of our library. We know this community understands how important it is that all residents of our wonderful town have access to its resources, and we thank you and the rest of Montclair for your time, your effort, and your financial support. Thank you.
Next would be caller with the number starting 973-744. It is your turn to comment. 973-744, please, for the record, state your name. Keep your comments to three minutes and mute your listening device.
Uh, good evening, councilors. This is Carmel Lockman. As you know, I am working with a group of two- and three-family property owners who oppose adoption of the new rent control ordinance. The original 2020 ordinance exempted two- and three-family homes from rent control. We just received the revised 2022 ordinance last week. The revised ordinance now applies rent control to two- and three-family homes unless they are owner-occupied. Here is why we object to the law. The council ceded negotiation of this ordinance to two special interest groups, TUM, the Tenants Organization of Montclair, and Montclair Property Owners Association. Small property owners were not involved in these negotiations and were taken by surprise when we learned in late March the ordinance as proposed applies to our properties. Though this law is sweeping and long-lasting, to exclude small property owners in crafting its terms is egregious and prejudicial to hundreds of property owners in Montclair. The new law is predicated on the issues noted in the opening section called Findings, which basically says in Section B that rents are going up, causing people to move. However, the town does not collect rental data from two- and three-family property owners to support this statement. Therefore, the town cannot have tracked this information over the years to back up the assertion that there have been substantial rent increases by two- and three-family property owners. This statement is wildly speculative and unsupported by empirical evidence. The town also does not have records on why people move. Tenants move for a variety of reasons, not always financial. Therefore, stating that increases in rent by two- and three-family property owners is causing tenants to move is totally unsupported by any factual data. We are interested in good government. Laws need to be promulgated based on research and facts, not wild speculation or anecdotal information. This new ordinance also imposes new rent reporting requirements, which are public documents. Having rents made public impinges on the privacy of both tenants and small landlords. Every neighboring town has a rent control ordinance except Glen Ridge. However, with one exception, Cedar Grove, the proposed Montclair law is out of step with our neighbors. Here is how rent control works in each of these towns with respect to two- and three-family properties. In Belleville and West Orange, rent control does not apply to two- and three-family properties. Rent control does not apply to owner-occupied four-family properties either. In Bloomfield, rent control does not apply to any property with five or fewer units. In Cedar Grove, rent control does not apply to any two-family property if it is owner-occupied. In Clifton, rent control does not apply to any property with six or fewer units. Little Falls and Verona, rent control does not apply to any two- and three-family properties. So we're totally out of step with all of our neighbors. Small property owners have a different profile than commercial investors. We know our tenants, value our relationship with them, strive to reduce tenant turnover as it is costly to us, and don't need onerous rules and regulations to successfully manage our properties for the benefit of both landlord and tenant. I understand that small property owners would support the new ordinance if its terms were amended to exempt any two- and three-family property and to exempt owner-occupied four-family properties. This is a moderate compromise that we hope the council will consider. Thank you.
Next would be the caller with the number starting 434-409. 434-409, it is your turn to comment. Please mute your listening device, state your name for the record, and keep your comments to three minutes.
Uh, this is Eric Brahms again. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, great. Once again, I'm calling to register my objection to the rent control ordinance. Uh, it's wrong to force this ordinance upon owners of two- to three-family buildings. These are mom-and-pop owners that have always kept the rents below market and fair because they know their tenants personally. Additionally, the requirements of this ordinance and the fees associated with compliance are onerous and overly burdensome for small mom-and-pop investors. It will be extremely difficult for small investors to comply with this ordinance without undue burden. In fact, one may make the argument that the ordinance was designed this way to make it difficult for mom-and-pop investors and force them to sell at a discount owing large investors like the ones that orchestrated this deal to come in and buy up all these properties. I have heard that the owner-occupied properties will not be affected by this ordinance, but that could be further from the truth. This ordinance will have a significant effect on all multifamily property values, owner-occupied or not. So if the owner of an owner-occupied building would like to borrow against their equity to make improvements to the property, consolidate debt, or send a child to college, they will have a diminished capacity to reduce. If someone who's of retirement age would like to sell their property to have money for retirement, they could expect to sell the significant discount with this ordinance in place and have less money to live on in their golden years. This ordinance does not only affect investor-owned property, it affects everyone. I read the local papers and Living Scott said the two- and three-family owners were represented in the negotiation. But that would be tough to know as a dark organization that is the MPOA will not make its members known to the public. And while I appreciate that Mr. Scott is an owner of a two- to three-family home, there are over 1,400 such buildings in Montclair. If he owns even three of those properties, he would still represent less than one-quarter of 1% of the two- to three-family owners. This is not proper representation at the negotiating table. I would hazard a guess that between 50 and 100% of four-plus unit buildings owners were represented at the negotiating table. We're only asking for the same representation. Lastly, I heard a council member bemoan the legal fees incurred by taxpayers in Montclair. I would like to remind the council that we did not bring this fight to them. They brought this fight to us. The same could be said for owners of four-plus unit buildings. The legal fees being borne by the Montclair taxpayer are solely the result of actions taken by the town council and absolutely no one else. The people will remember this. That's all I have.
Next would be caller with the number starting 973-303. It is your turn to comment. 973-303, please, for the record, state your name. Keep your comments to three minutes and mute your listening device. 973-303. Moving on, caller with the number 201921. It is your turn to comment. 201921, please, for the record, state your name, mute your listening device, and keep your comments to three minutes.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. So, good evening, mayor, council, and the public. My name is Bahava Felidzirad. I am the... I'm the president of the Tenants Organization of Montclair. And I'm calling in tonight to thank the mayor and council for your support of this journey towards rent control with all of its ups and downs, smiles and frowns, from the simple to the complex. I added something to what I want to say, and you'll clearly know what that's about in listening to the previous callers. Rents made public when it's listed with the Realtor, and many owners list their list, post their listings on Craigslist. So I'm not really sure what, what those statements are about when you can see it in a, in a listing, and you can go back and pull a Google listing to see the rent made public. Um, we don't need to match our neighbors. We are Montclair. We are special. And we should have had rent control a long time ago. With regards to the two- and three families, um, the two- and three families, um, we all know that there are investors buying, renting, and not living there. I believe that some of the callers against rent control just may have cold hearts and no understanding of the big picture here. So I would like to say, we appreciate your approval of the rent control ordinance as it reads now. I'd like to thank some of the tenants who came out and bore their hearts at the public council meeting in order to get us, um, through to this point in the journey. Uh, Diehard, Tony Martin, Brenda, Jalani, Jared, Tanisha, Gerard, Glenn, Pluchet, Jacob, Peter, Jean, Trevor, Desi, Luisa, Evy, Alan, Revsafia O'Neale, Salema, Mary Ellen, Joy, Kimberly, and the late Albert Pelham. While I have not named everyone I could hear, I'd also like to thank Mitch Khan and Joan Fransky. I know that, um, I'm grateful for everyone who helped to see this journey to fruition. We have this one last reading on April the 19th, and, um, we appreciate all of those who will come forward and help to continue the legacy of, um, rent control in Montclair. Everyone have a great night, and again, we look forward to your approval of this first reading for April 5th and the second reading on April 19th. And you can see our, uh, next Tenants Organization of Montclair meetings on our Facebook at TUM Advocacy. Have a good night.
Next would be caller with the number starting 917-406. It is your turn to comment. 917-406, please, for the record, state your name. Keep your comments to three minutes and mute your listening device.
Good evening. My name is Robert Genovese. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you for the opportunity, uh, to call in. Um, calling this evening with respect to, uh, safety issue, um, in Montclair, New Jersey at, uh, the intersection of Park, Wachong Plaza, and Wachong Avenue. It seems, um, as though this intersection has been, um, a cause of concern for many years. Um, we've been able to find articles with respect to this, uh, intersection going back 50 years. Uh, there was an actual article in the Times that spoke to kind of the dangers of this, um, of this intersection. 50 years later, um, you know, increase in, uh, population in Montclair and increase in vehicular traffic, um, it doesn't seem like anything has been done to address these issues. Um, we have a, um, in addition to living in Montclair, we also have and operate a business on the corner of, um, this intersection. And in this space, we're able to see not only the, um, unfortunate incidences that arise that are reported, um, but we do see near misses. Um, we do see quite a, a variety of road rage. And just recently, we started a petition to, again, raise the concern, um, with, uh, with the town, with the council, and with the mayor, as well as with the county of Essex. So in just under a week, um, or, or so, um, we have about a thousand names on the petition. Um, and I think what that does is demonstrate to, um, you know, to your team as well as to our residents that we do need to address it. I think, um, within our community, safety is, um, our number one priority, um, especially, um, where the intersection really connects not only, um, our most vulnerable, our, our youth and our older adults in, in, in the neighborhood, but also, uh, quite a number of, um, students, um, high school students, grammar school students, and, and certainly, uh, moms and dads, um, bringing their children to, uh, to pre-K. With all that being said, um, we're happy to see that there's an ordinance that's being presented. And I'm not sure exactly what the protocol may be for this evening, but it looks like it's ordinance 22-08. We would like to see that, um, ordinance approved, and, uh, we'd like to see action taken place, um, quickly. Um, it seems like this type of an action will, uh, stop the hemorrhaging to some degree. Um, but we also, within the petition, ask for a larger study, uh, traffic study because it is, um, quite, um, a, a congested, uh, intersection. So within the context of the ordinance, we'd also like to see, um, start and end dates for the traffic study. Without start and end dates, um, it's not necessarily a plan of action. Um, so again, thank you for your time. Um, thank you for your work on this. Um, and, and certainly, I know, um, there's a mom that's going to be dialing in as well, um, who, you know, thankfully, um, was struck, um, back on the 14th of March, uh, with her daughter, and very, very luckily escaped any serious injury. Um, she'll be on the line as well, and again, we're just kind of asking and pleading with the community to make these changes quickly and also provide start and end dates for the traffic study. Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you for that, and I'll certainly just note, uh, the following first and foremost. You know, to your point of moving quickly, you know, I did have the opportunity to speak with Samantha, and, uh, certainly also, uh, I, I know one of the things that we did was, uh, reached out to County Administrator Jackson. Uh, immediately had a conversation, and he rapidly, uh, began working on this with the county executive. I can certainly tell you, and as you see by the results, he came back, uh, with two things. Number one, trying to expedite the study, as you note, um, looking for, for ways to do that, uh, in, in a, in a way that gets the funding and also the needed approvals to get that started. He continues to work specifically in that space, uh, but also, and, and just as importantly, uh, recommended with the town, with the county engineer, coordinating with the town engineer, um, the changes that you're seeing introduced in the ordinance tonight, uh, was discussed. It's specifically even a resolution recommending, but it was determined by the county engineer, we got to do an ordinance. Um, so we are moving forward with the ordinance introduction as you're seeing, uh, tonight. That's the first big thing. I can tell you that, uh, the county administrator, um, and, and certainly even the county executive, but certainly, uh, Mr. Jackson, uh, was willing to speak with, with, uh, everybody. I asked him to connect, um, you know, hear the personal stories, so he understood what we're hearing and seeing in Montclair. Um, he did have, uh, many of those conversations and certainly appreciate him taking the time to do that as well. Um, and we've been in contact with him the whole way. This has been a good example of a team effort. I know that, uh, Councilwoman Schlegel has been intimately involved. Uh, Deputy Mayor Herlock also intersecting there, and Councilman Yakabelis, as well as all my colleagues. Um, you know, Councilman Russo, you know, Councilwoman Price Abrams, and also, uh, Councilman Cummings, all playing a role. But, but certainly, um, I know that every single person is committed to making sure we take action on this, uh, in rapid fashion. And certainly, I can tell you that immediately upon a call to, uh, uh, Mr. Jackson, uh, he was open to, you know, doing anything and all he could in the, in the short term, medium term, and long term. Um, he proposed specific actions as, as he reached out to residents, um, who I forwarded to him that had concerns and, uh, specifically, you know, again, partnered up with us and our engineers and the county engineers to, to recommend, uh, actions, starting with the ones you're seeing, uh, here tonight. Uh, we're going to take this action. It doesn't have to be by an ordinance. We have to introduce it. Um, then our next meeting, we should be able to, again, second reading of that ordinance by law, which we do have to do. Uh, and then we will work to expedite that to get it into place, uh, so, and then we will have that in place as we look at, uh, continuing options, you know, for the area. So, um, all of that good news happening, uh, even without all the signatures that you had, and we know those signatures continue to grow because it's an example of something where, where everyone is concerned and passionate about and understands that we need action on. So, uh, we concur. Short answer. So appreciate your call and, uh, certainly know that the efforts, uh, know that the efforts, uh, don't go unnoticed and, and certainly that we're working hard to, to address the issue. Thank you.
Next would be caller with the number starting 973-820. It is your turn to comment. 973-820. Please, for the record, state your name. Keep your comments to three minutes and mute your listening device.
Good evening, mayor and council. It's Tony Martin. I'm with the Tenants Organization. I just want to say something, uh, quickly. I just want to say something quickly about my reaction to the outcry from these several small landlords, that they were left out of the discussions and negotiations concerning rent control. It reminds me very much of something that happened two years ago. That would be the outcry from a hastily formed group of landlords calling itself the Montclair Property Owners Association, who said they had been left out of the discussion of rent control in Montclair. In both those cases, the outraged objections to having been quote/unquote "left in the dark" came after very considerable public airing of the issues. The MPOA said it was shocked to discover rent control was on the city council agenda after more than a year of tenants testifying openly at nearly every town council meeting about the need for it. Now, some small landlords are saying they were locked out of discussions. It's just not so. Any resident who wanted to is free to reach out to council members and any town agency, or by speaking at council meetings. During the recent negotiations on the revised ordinance, the MPOA leaked information liberally, and you could read it in the newspaper. I just think, you know, our democracy depends on citizens caring enough to stay informed on those issues most important to them, and pursuing their rights to that information. Of course, it also depends on the kind of hearing we're having tonight, where anyone is free to appear and speak their mind, as hundreds of other tenants have done over the last few years. I'll speak my mind on this proposed rent control ordinance. It is as fair a settlement as could possibly be worked out by the parties. And I believe the parties included those who stepped up on the basis of their own self-informing action to bring this historic agreement into existence. Thank you.
Next would be caller with the number starting 201-532. It is your turn to comment. 201-532, please, for the record, state your name. Keep your comments to three minutes and mute your listening device.
Hello, my name is Ellen Nagel. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I own and rent out a two-family home in Montclair. And I have concerns about the way this process has taken place. I've been aware for some time of the movement for rent control, and I followed it for several months. From everything I read and heard, it was constantly stated that two and three family homes were exempt from rent control. So I was extremely surprised and dismayed when there was this sudden 11th hour announcement that two and three family homes would be included. I was not contacted by anyone nor given any opportunity to give input until just this last week, nor did I see anything eliciting comments about this change from homeowners such as myself, or from anyone interested in transparent government. In the past months, several months, I looked multiple times at the website of the Montclair Tenants Organization, the Montclair Property Owners Association, as well as Montclair Township websites and other newsletters and so on. None of them mentioned the possibility of including two and three family homes. Approval of the agreement was a secretive, last-minute process without adequate warning. Having a few private homeowners involved in the negotiation is not a substitute for obtaining wider input. I believe that I've been denied a voice in this process at a point where it could be meaningful. It seems that this ordinance was intended for corporate landlords, that many of the provisions and requirements were geared for them, but will provide a hardship to private homeowner landlords. Does not seem to have been due consideration of how private homeowners of two and three family units will be affected. To give a little background, I currently have one tenant who's been renting an apartment for almost 11 years. I have never raised his rent, because I value him as a tenant, and because I wanted to minimize tenant turnover. I always knew that if my expenses increased dramatically, I would be able to pass on a fair share of those expenses to him. That possibility will be severely limited because he's over 65. My second apartment was recently vacated when the tenant who had been there seven years, again, I never raised his rent, moved out of state due to marriage. So I am not an evil landlord looking for ways to gouge my tenant. Because our house has single-zone heating system, I was never able to have the tenants create their own accounts with PSENG, and I pay for the heat and hot water. I'm sure that PSENG is not going to limit my fuel increases to 2%, 2.5% or even 4%. In fact, my fuel costs were 25% higher than for the corresponding period last year. Did those who put the new ordnance together even consider the difference between commercial, multiple-dwelling apartment houses, where tenants all have their own individual heat accounts, and private homes where there is no such agreement? If tenants have individual fuel accounts, they'll be responsible for any rate hikes, unlike my situation.
Ma'am, your three minutes have expired. Please conclude your comments promptly.
Okay. I would like to express concern about my private tax information becoming public, including bank accounts and other numbers, private medical information, and the charities I contribute to. I believe the process will serve as a deterrent to any small landlords either requesting a hardship waiver or trying to register. And I am concerned about how this will affect the property value of my home. I think that people looking for multifamily homes will go to the surrounding communities where two and three family homes are excluded. I'm very disappointed that the leadership of the township is supporting this unfair process. Thank you.
Next would be caller with the number starting 862-926. It is your turn to comment. 862-926, please, for the record, state your name, mute your listening device, and keep your comments to three minutes.
My name is Edward Robin. I'm with the Montclair Library Friends Steering Committee. On behalf of the Montclair Library Friends Steering Committee, I wish to thank the mayor and council for their unanimous approval of $515,000 in discretionary funds for the Montclair Public Library. This is a major step forward for returning the Montclair Public Library to its normal position in the community. The additional funds will enable the Bellevue Avenue Branch Library to increase hours from 18 hours currently to 40 hours a week. The additional funds will enable the main library to increase their hours from 45 hours to 60 hours. This will permit additional evening and weekend hours. The weekend hours are extremely important for working families with young children who can't go into the library during weekday hours, but must go into the library, can only go into the library on the weekends. These additional funds will enable the materials budget, the budget for books, video, and other media to increase that budget by 70%. The... This is a... This is a very important action by the mayor and council, and we really express our appreciation for all that you are doing for this important and vital service to our community. Thank you.
Next would be caller with the number starting 973-330. It is your turn to comment. 973-330. Please, for the record, state your name, mute your listening device, and keep your comments to three minutes.
Good evening, Council. My name is Frank Rubacki, 398 Upper Mountain Avenue. First, I would like to get some updates on our council's redevelopment projects. First, when will the Orange Road parking deck be completed? Second, the capital cost of the Midtown parking deck, we're supposed to be capped at 1.2 million, but now they're rising to 2 million. When will the deck start generating revenues? Third, the MC Hotels combined Islands, payment in lieu of taxes, and its Affordable Housing Trust fund contribution are in total over 1.1 million in arrears by your figures. The 2022 introduced budget shows an increase of 1.3 million to the municipal portion of the taxpayers' levy. Is it fair to say almost all this increase would not be necessary if the MC Hotel had paid their outstanding bills? Fourth is the total 2021 pilot billings townwide were $4.2 million, which was flat to 2020. Actually, they went down $1,600. But over that same period, the local portion of the tax levy for the average assessed home went up $400. We have five more redevelopment projects in the pipeline. Will their financial agreements be modeled on these existing ones? And then, moving on to the bond ordinance. We bought air raiders for Edgemont Pond in 2017. I'm not sure why this bond ordinance includes $40,000 for new air raiders. The native species ordinance, I think, it sounds like it was a proclamation. Well, it's supposed to be a resolution. Now it's an ordinance. Not particularly thoughtful or well-crafted. For example, homeowners are responsible for the upkeep of the landscape meeting between their sidewalk and the street. They are asked to water the township's newly planted native species trees. But you exempt the public lots, the public lawns in which they are planted. And therefore, you exempt ubiquitous residential mosquito and tick applications to deadly to pollinators, which is the point of the ordinance. So this ordinance just strikes me as rushed and not properly vetted. And why this remain a resolution, I don't know. I was going to talk about Waichung, but the comments by TUM, the tenants organization of Montclair, are really quite special. You know, in Montclair, we are quite special, so we tend to make special comments every so often. And calling people cold-hearted because they oppose something is special. And then Tony Martin saying that this was, that rent control was an agenda item two years ago was just patently wrong, and she knows better. She absolutely knows better, which is disappointing, so now I can't trust what she says, because it was an off-
Your three minutes have expired, so please do us the service of concluding your comments promptly.
Thank you very much. That concludes my comments for tonight. Thank you.
To the gentleman's point, Mayor, through you, although I tried to take notes as fast as I possibly could, I wasn't able to write all of Mr. Rubacki's questions down. I will certainly ask the chief financial officer to listen to the tape of the meeting, so that even if she's watching this evening, she can jot down his questions and then respond promptly. What I will say about the air raiders is that they are necessary because the air raiders that we have, having purchased them, I believe the gentleman is correct, in 2017, they are at the end of their useful life, and that is a very important part of the centerpiece of our municipal... A jewel in our municipal park system. Unfortunately, those don't last. So, when they are at the end of their useful life, we need to procure new ones.
Mayor?
Yacabellus?
I just want to comment as well that we've withdrawn the native species ordinance for further consideration. You know, it's definitely something that I could have done a better job with, and want to take the time to do a better job with, so I appreciate Mr. Rubacki's comments. And there's definitely some other feedback and comments that we've gotten as well, so we're going to take our time to do it right instead of doing it fast. And so I just want to make sure if anybody else is in the queue to call in about that, that it's, you know, that they know that it's not on the agenda tonight.
Next would be caller with the number starting 908692. It is your turn to comment. 908692, please, for the record, state your name, mute your listening device, and keep your comments to three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Are you there?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
Oh, perfect. Sorry, I haven't called into this before. Thank you. My name is Carolyn Corbrand. I am a parent in the district, and I wanted to call in about the vote for allowing skateboarding lessons to happen at Ram Park. We are a family that is very grateful that Montclair has voted to allow a more permanent skate park to, you know, join our community. It would also be really great to allow the kids of this town to have lessons there. You know, my kids can take soccer, baseball, lacrosse, you know, any number of sports throughout the town, different parks. But if the vote tonight is no, that skateboarding lessons wouldn't be allowed, that would be a real disservice to our kids. I think there's a lot of kids, like my son, who have ADHD, and as well as other disabilities in town, that really, really benefit him at the park. It's a great... It's a great way for kids to socialize, who maybe don't socialize so well in a sports team. My son is the typical kid that really doesn't do well yet on a more team-oriented sport. But at the skate park, he feels, you know, cool. He feels accepted. It's nice for him to learn tricks and be able to do things where he's socializing with other children, but while doing an individual sport. And so I would ask that you please allow skateboarding lessons to take place in our town so kids don't have to, you know, travel to other towns to do something as well, you know, that they could do right here. A lot of the kids too who have disabilities, who have been introduced, my son was introduced to the skate abilities workshops that were offered there. They don't always do so well with change, and going to another town in a new skate park isn't necessarily a great option, so I just ask that you vote yes. Thank you.
Next would be caller with the number starting 917-392. It is your turn to comment. 917-392, please, for the record, state your name, mute your listening device, and keep your comments to three minutes.
Hi, my name is Eileen Birmingham. I'm calling tonight about the budget. I want to first thank you. I know there's a lot going on in Montclair, and you have a lot of responsibility, and I thank you for all your work. I just, speaking of a lot going on in Montclair, I'm sure you've heard about the proposed bond referendum that the school board is proposing, and it's obviously large. I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done in our schools. And so, as we approach, you know, such a big decision in Montclair, I'm hoping that from the municipality, we can get important information that will inform our decision. And so, one thing I would note in the budget presentation, there's a line, you know, in the discussion of a AAA bond rating, where it says 90.5% of debt is scheduled to be retired in 10 years, but a large pension and OPEB obligation. So, I think for Montclair, you know, our municipal budget is large for the size of our town. And I think it would be helpful to understand, you know, the projections going into the future, because again, we have to make a big decision about this bond. I'll be upfront that I would support our schools and funding for improving our schools. But, you know, I think there are things that hopefully we can learn between now and the time we need to make our decision that can help us inform. And so, like, one of the questions that I have, for example, is that, you know, when we speak about a large pension and OPEB obligation, I'd note that in the 2021 budget, personnel costs for police was $19.9 million. And in the 2020- I'd note that in the 2021 budget, personnel costs for police was 19.9 million dollars, and in the 2022 budget, it's 22.6 million dollars. That's two, you know, well over two and a half million dollar difference in just a year. Like, what are the projections for that? Or is this going, is this something that's going to be happening? And that data comes from the user friendly budget. You know, what are the projections going into the future for how much we'll be spending on police? We spend per capita very much more than other towns do on our police force and, you know, we don't see a lot of data around why that needs to be. And so I would just encourage, again, hope that we can get more data because there's, you know, there are benefits, but there are also costs, and I think we really need to really explore those as we go forward. I think the total spending for Montclair for public safety is over 36 million dollars. And again, for a town that needs to fund its school district almost entirely without state aid, that is a very, very large amount to spend on public safety compared to other towns. And I know I've said this before and I appreciate, you know, you're listening and, you know, trying to do things about it as we can, but I do think we have a big decision coming up in this town. You know, I think we all want to have economic diversity. We all want to support our student, you know, our students. So I would just encourage us to, again, have a more robust discussion about, you know, what our future projections for our town are in terms of municipal spending. And again, thank you for your service and have a nice night.
Next would be caller with the number starting 973303. It is your turn to comment. 973303, please, for the record, state your name, mute your listening device and keep your comments to three minutes.
Hi, this is Karen DiKino. Do you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I work in information technology and I have a small business in property management. I live in and manage a four family and I also manage a three family. Once in a while, I get a notice from the town that one of my neighbors is requesting a zoning variance and I have the opportunity to attend a meeting. Yet, when the town passed a law that affects my personal business, I found out by word of mouth after the deal was over. I followed the saga of the rent control ordinance. I am a member of Montclair Local, I read the news. I chose not to get involved because the ordinance was not directed at me. It specifically excluded four family owner occupied and it did not include two or three family homes. So I was expecting to vote on the ordinance around May 10th. Now we are right back where we were in 2020, when the council passed rent control ordinance without including the apartment owners, the landlords in the process. So now I would like an opportunity to review and comment on the ordinance before it is final. My second point is that the two, three and four family landlords provide much of the affordable housing in Montclair. And I believe that we should appreciate the landlords for providing this service and support our continued success. My third point is, what is the rush? Why not approve the ordinance now without including the two, three and four family owner occupied? And then take your time to review the needs of this particular part of our community. Thank you.
Next would be caller with the number starting 973202. It is your turn to comment. 973202, please, for the record, state your name, mute your listening device and keep your comments to three minutes. 973202.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am, we can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Diana Dominici and I'm calling in support of the ordinance regarding the safety measures needed for the intersection of Wachung Plaza and Wachung Avenue. I want to thank Mr. Genovese for moving quickly to bring this to public attention again, although it has been a problem for decades as per the articles that have been circulating even from the 1970s. So as a longtime resident, not that it matters, but I am, I have noticed the need for help on that intersection, especially since the COVID restrictions were lifted and traffic has increased and people seem to be driving with great anger in that complicated intersection. And with that, I would like to say that today I saw at the intersection of Valley Road and Lorraine, there was not one but two crossing guards. And that is not as complicated as the intersection between Wachung Avenue and Wachung Plaza, and so perhaps we need a second crossing guard to help and also perhaps a police officer in the interim while we wait for the ordinance to be passed. Thank you very much.
Next would be caller with the number starting 845304. It is your turn to comment. 805, excuse me, 845304. Please, for the record, state your name, mute your listening device and keep your comments to three minutes.
Hi, this is Samantha Han. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, as perfect to follow the previous commenter, I see that a resolution was introduced for a traffic study at that intersection of Park Street crossing toward Wachung. Thank goodness Rob started this amazing petition that has almost 1,000 signatures. It was my daughter and myself crossing that intersection on the way to school in the morning. And luckily, we weren't hurt worse, but a car did accelerate through the crosswalk and hit us from a very short range, and I did get knocked down. And if he hadn't braked when he did, my daughter would have been hit and that would have been really terrible. And I feel strongly that the driver wasn't trying to be negligent. He probably looked at the area where we were about to cross from, but he had to turn his head and look in about six other directions and he proceeded when he thought it was safe and it wasn't. So I know that a lot of people's eyes are on this. And it would be great if there could be an extra crossing guard or a police officer, especially in the mornings during school drop off and then also at pickup time. That being said, it's a very busy intersection at all times. There are lots of kids that live on Park Street or the surrounding area that cross that and obviously lots of other community members. And so I've heard lots of things be mentioned, whether it's a blinking light, a traffic light being put in, a rotary, lots of other ideas. But I feel at the very least that there should be a blinking light at that crosswalk and I look forward to seeing what the resolution will be. I know that there was supposed to be a traffic study and an engineer. I haven't heard anything about that, but Rob's petition said that they're looking, we are looking for completion dates for the vehicular and pedestrian traffic revisions. He has a front row seat at Local and he's seen a lot of bad things happen. We're very, my daughter and I are very lucky. She was seven. If he had didn't stop, she definitely would have been under that car. So I really hope that this is taken seriously and that nobody has to get hurt or killed at that spot going forward. Thanks for listening.
Mr. Mayor, Manager, can I say something?
Councilman Russo.
I just want to respond to Diana and Ms. Hans comment and Rob from Montclair Local, which is a great coffee shop that I've frequented the last few weeks quite a bit and witnessed. Well, I've witnessed it for 20 or more years, but what I did the other day is have to go out into the street and stop the traffic myself, so a young man about 10 years old could cross. He wasn't able to get across because it wasn't stopping. There was no crossing guard there at that time. It was about noon, I believe. I think the point that was just made by Ms. Dominici is that she saw two crossing guards at the Lorraine intersection, which I don't think has as big a problem because it has a light. But, you know, I didn't think we ought to have somebody assigned there for the interim before we have our new signage, which we hope will say no right turn. That'll help quite a bit. But as people come out of Wachung Plaza and try to go across to Park Street, they have a tremendous fight on their hands to avoid a accident, which I have witnessed myself so many years. Now, I know Councilman Yakabelis is working on this with Deputy Mayor Hurlock and Counselor Schlegel, but I do go back many, many years trying to get a full light at this location. And what the article from 50 years ago says, Martin Tulchon's wife was the Democratic Committee Woman for the area and almost had a light installed after all of her efforts with the county, the state and the town. And Ms. Tulchon and her husband, they worked with Montclair State, I knew them, they were very active in town, but they failed at that time. And then we failed 20 years ago when I was mayor. Let's not fail this time. A traffic sign is going to be helpful. We may need to do one on the other side. When people come out of park, they shouldn't be making a left turn, only right turn only there. We're going to have to do a lot of signage, but I think in the interim, please, I'm asking this to the manager. I know I can't ask the police to do anything. If we could assign a police officer, we could assign people who do traffic work here for a while during the morning, maybe eight to 10 and maybe two to four between lunchtime, please consider that. It's just a request from a council member here who's observed this himself and had to take some action last week when I was in having coffee at Rob's Montclair Local. Thank you, Manager, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And just to reiterate, again, County Administrator Jackson has been a key player in this as well, and certainly as county has control here, we will be working and interfacing in a partnership to make sure we get stuff done in this regard as soon as possible. Certainly, anything we can do on our end, you know, coordination potentially with schools or otherwise or crossing guards or secondary measures in terms of other staffing in the area. Mr. Stafford, I'm sure you'll you'll look at that as well to see what can happen, but we'll continue to work with Mr. Jackson and certainly continue to have those conversations which are ongoing almost constantly.
Excuse me, Mayor, can I add a comment as well?
Councilman Yakabelis.
Thank you. So I do want to make two points, which I think are really important. One, we got the ball rolling with this before the accident took place and before the petition started. So that's to say, I appreciate the outpouring, but this was something that we started the dialogue with Commissioner Gill and Councilman Schlegel and I started this conversation. I know many of you have had the same conversation back in March of 2020 when I was collecting petition signatures to run for office on that corner. And, you know, circled around with Deputy Mayor Hurlock and Council Schlegel a few weeks ago, a few months ago, actually, at this point, to get the ball rolling in terms of specifically what we needed to do, and you all know because you all voted for it. We passed the resolution several weeks ago, found out the resolution wasn't enough, we needed to come back and do an ordinance, this is what we're doing now. So that's point one. And point two is I also think we just have to be careful not to get in front of the professionals on this, you know, I've gotten a lot of emails already. We think it should be a roundabout. We think it should be a traffic light. Don't do a traffic light. You'll back up all the cars with dropping off kids at Wachung School in congestion. You know, let the process take place and let their, you know, let the engineers and the experts come up with a solution. I know that what we had asked for in the resolution initially was for there to be a holistic view at this area with special mind paid to people with disabilities, people on bicycles, pedestrians, seniors, et cetera. So to really take a step back, take a holistic view. The low hanging fruit here is certainly and very easily the, what we're going to do tonight, which is advancing the ordinance to not make a right turn, I'm sorry, right turn only from Wachung Plaza and to Wachung Avenue, so there's no more going across Wachung Avenue to continue onto Park Street or making a left to go onto the railroad tracks. And there's also other low hanging fruit components as well, same thing in terms of right turn only if you're approaching Wachung Plaza on Park Street coming from the north headed south. But I think it's important that we don't get too far in front of what the bigger solution and let the engineers do their work. And that's the process, as you mentioned, Mayor, that, you know, the county and the municipal engineers are working on together. Thank you.
Can I say something, Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Schlegel.
Yes, thank you. Yes, I agree with everything that you said, Mayor, and Mr. Yakabel, Mr. Councilman Yakabelis. But I think what's key here also is the, the no left turn coming out of Wachung Plaza is a very good first step in looking at the traffic flow here in this plaza. But what really needs to happen when the study, the traffic study and the engineering study takes place, is that it must be done during peak times when there's the most cars in that area. It has to be done at intervals on Saturday mornings, when school starts at Wachung School and people coming through the plaza, getting, moving over to, driving over to Montclair High School at 8 o'clock in the morning. It has to be done at dismissal time for Wachung School and for Montclair High School. It has to be done when Montclair High School goes out to lunch. Many, many, many hundreds of kids from the high school go to Wachung Plaza to the bagel store and the pizzeria and the Chinese takeout restaurant. So that study has to be done at those times. I'm sure that they will. I have lots of trust in Administrator Jackson and our engineering firm and their engineering firm, but I just hope that, you know, that it is done at those times because that is key. I also want to commend our police department, who always, who I, I'm in Wachung Plaza very often and I do see police patrolling there. I do see police officers walking around and it makes a difference as well for people to stop, people to pay attention. You know, people hopefully always crossing at the crosswalks and crossing at the corners. That's key. So I often don't see that sometimes people, you know, running in the middle of the street to cross the street, which, you know, I do too on occasion, if you're in a hurry, but but I hope that that's, that's what happens when the studies are done. So, thank you.
Yeah, Councilwoman, I know that oftentimes, which is sometimes some of the delay that there's, you know, an effort, as you know, seasonally even at times, right, to make sure it's the most high traffic time. But next time I speak with the administrator, I'll confirm that, which I'm sure is the case, that they're going to look for a density rich time period to look at. But thank you for this. Mr. Stafford.
Mayor, there are nobody, there are no other callers in the queue.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. This concludes public comment. Next, moving forward, we have ordinance O2204, which is an ordinance to amend 327 vehicles and traffic, the code of the township of Montclair, and I so move. Second. Just moved and seconded. I'm going to open the hearing without objection. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, I will open it for the hearing. Mr. Stafford, Mr. Finn.
Sir, at present, there is no one in the queue. I will let you know if that changes.
Well, what's is changing right now, I'm going to close the hearing. So I'll close the hearing. On that, is there objections to closing? Seeing no objection. Hearing on that is closed. Any questions, concerns or additional comments from my colleagues? Seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Cummings.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurlock.
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams.
Yes.
Counselor Russo.
Yes.
Counselor Schlegel.
Yes.
Counselor Yakabelis.
Yes.
Mayor Spiller.
Yes. So, Mr. Stafford, I guess we finally put the stop signs back up again after up and down, up, down, we got them back up now.
Not quite yet, Mayor. We need item G.
Yeah, well, we're getting there. We're getting there. Thanks. All right, next. Next is new ordinances. We've got ordinance O2205. This is an ordinance to repeal and replace ordinance 0205, establishing rent control of the township of Montclair. I so move.
Second.
Just moved and seconded. Any questions, concerns, comments? Councilman Yakabelis.
Thanks, Mayor.
And then I see Councilwoman Price Abrams next, and then Councilman Schlegel. I got the queue. Okay.
Just in relation to some of the emails and calls we're getting with regards to two and three family units. I just, you know, I've gone back and looked and I went and looked at to see like when were things talked about, when were things reported. So going back as far as March 2020, there's public reporting on discussion of inclusion of two and three family units and then units. And then again, December seventeenth of twenty twenty-one, Montclair Local published an article which talked about the inclusion of of two and three family units. Two and three family units have been something I was talking about as a, and many of us are, so this isn't a credit thing. Since I was a candidate, something I've felt pretty strongly about. Just believing in the, you know, the the law of averages and the importance of, you know, if you're gonna do something like this, the 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 more you can spread it out and have it affect or the more units that can be affected by it. It spreads out the responsibility, frankly, for what we're trying to do here. A few people I engage with over email seem to think that their units were included when they weren't because they're owner occupied. So I want to be clear that people understand if you live in the two or three family dwelling, it is excluded from rent control. I think it's also really important to talk about the exceptions to the rent cap. So two point five percent or four percent, two point five percent for seniors or four percent for everybody else. Because there's a lot of, you know, we've got a bunch of messages around, well, you're not doing anything to control my tax increases or my utilities and all that. And I respect and I understand that. Just recent history, you know, we're raising taxes two percent this year approximately. Last year, approximately two percent from a municipal perspective. And then, as you guys know, the prior council didn't raise taxes three years in a row. So one, I have even just in the last five-year history, we haven't come close to a four percent increase. So if there's a correlation between a rent increase and a tax increase, we haven't come close to that number in the last five years. And then in so many circumstances, very legitimate circumstances, right? Because the argument or the concern is, well, I want to be able to invest in my building that I own. I want to be able to make sure that I can recoup those dollars from rentals. Totally legitimate. If you're gonna buy a house, you're gonna rent out units, you're gonna invest money in that home. You want to be able to recoup the money that you've invested into that home, be able to keep up with not just your bills, but also pay yourself back for what you've invested. I think it's totally reasonable. And that's why, as you know and others know, we have vacancy decontrol that's permitted once every five years between tenancies, which is the opportunity for a landlord to catch rents up to market rate if they choose to do that. In addition, we have several other, I call them sort of relief mechanisms in the law. One is a hardship increase where if the annual operating expenses for any one building exceeds at least sixty-five percent of the total gross income, you can apply for an exemption. For major capital improvements to the building and to the structure, there's an exemption process. And for major additional services, there's an exemption process. So I just, from the starting point where, you know, your rents are, first of all, able to go up as high as six percent with exception for seniors, if they haven't been raised in the last two years during the rent freeze, plus four percent or two and a half percent per year, plus all of these exceptions. I just have a hard time seeing how a owner of a two or three family isn't going to be able to recoup or keep up with their expenses. You know, and I think the, and everybody's been a part of this journey. It's been incredibly complicated. So many voices in the process trying to achieve what we our version of the best version or balance looks like. And I really believe that this strikes that. I mean, frankly, to get Mitch Khan and Ron Simoncini to agree on something like that should, they should go on a roadshow. If anybody looks up their history of decades of fighting in in towns across the state, they agreed on this ordinance. If anything, I think we've created a model ordinance in Montclair that can be replicated throughout the state, one that two parties that have been suing each other in towns across the state for decades actually agreed on. So my main reason for speaking up and I'll conclude my comments right now is I just don't want people to have the wrong information. That I I hate when people are feeling cut out or dismissed or worried or concerned based on not, you know, factual information. So I really encourage people to read the law. I also created frequently asked questions off of the law to try and explain it a little bit more in layman's terms. So please take this time to read it and don't just take somebody's email or what public comments have been made as as the truth. Read it for yourself. Thank you.
Sir, Councilwoman Price Abrams.
Uh, thank you, mayor, and also thank you, Councilman Yakabelas, for some of your comments. I'll I'll piggyback a drop. But I really just want to start with regard to this ordinance to say, you know, that I think it's a moment of great relief. I think something really good has come about here and that we're on the way to having secured rent control for this town. It's a meaningful ability to stabilize the cost for tenants. It's key to the affordability for residents in this town. It lends itself to the diversity of the community that we prize so much. Those are two of the reasons that I ran for for this office. So through this extensive negotiation process that everyone knows about, you know, of course, Montclair landlords had a seat at the table, secured key wins. And I believe that that those were wins that were, you know, also for those who were not at the table, not not everyone's gonna personally be sitting there. And, you know, we've heard certain people represented the interests of small landlords and other parties at the table. Every every individual affected isn't going to be sitting at a table, but having your concerns considered or there. And and I know that Council Yakabelas just pointed to something I would have said as well. That there are the hardship exemptions, capital improvement. We we want this to be workable. And I think we're we're soon to be on to, you know, in some ways, a great experiment, but when we hope that will work, that that institutes, you know, a framework for how we're gonna run this in the town. And we have a lot to to build off of. So, again, all kinds of folks were in or all kinds of interests were were, I think, at the table and that with appreciation that this got done. And I do want to call out specifically some people by name as others have. You know, Mitch Khan and Joan Pransky, Mitch whom I know and Joan whom I don't, but only by reputation, who are outside tenant experts who are instrumental in negotiating for the tenants. Tomb, you know, are regular contributors here in town, but Alhava Felicia Dodd and Tony Martin, along with other housing lead advocates in town, William Scott, Deirdre Malloy, were among the people who were very instrumental. And I thank the Montclair landlords who were involved, who saw a better way than, you know, persisting in the lawsuit and that they they came to the table and we got something constructive done through negotiations. I want to thank our professional staff, including our manager, Mr. Stafford, our interim attorney, Paul Burr, and our deputy attorney, Gina DeVito, all of whom had to help pull this together and into what we have in front of us now. And, you know, my colleagues here on the council that, you know, I think we we really collaborated in a way, whether indirect or indirect kind of conversations and and bringing about something that's gonna be a meaningful change. And I do just want to add further to those many of whom have called in and others situated like them, the two and three family units that aren't owner occupied. So they they will be covered by rent control in a way that, you know, let's go through the process, see how this works. The housing commissions there, there are there are mechanisms for us to review over time, but let's let's launch this. And I think something really positive is a foot for the community. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Schlegel.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, mayor. Well, um, what Councilwoman Price Abrams just said, what should be a positive, big positive step forward here now has a very negative shadow over it. And I, I really, really feel for the one thousand and eighty-eight two-family homeowners and the one hundred and twenty-nine three-family homeowners that live in our town that have, whether it's a small business, whether it's a an investment property which allows them to stay here in in their in the homes that they live in. Um, it it makes me very sad that that these people felt excluded from this process, that they didn't feel they had a seat at the table. They didn't know about meetings. They were never invited to a meeting. I was never invited to a meeting. And I said that to somebody recently and they said, why should you have been invited? But that's which was really hard to to swallow. Um, five people called in tonight, but I've also gotten dozens of emails, as I know all of, most of us did as well. I got phone calls and and I and nobody, none of the two and three family home, multifamily homeowners feel that the ordinance is going to fight. It's it's, they don't have a problem with most of the ordinance. They just felt excluded. They felt like they had no voice. They felt like the rug was pulled out from under them when the original ordinance didn't include them. They were surprised. They're shocked. And and they, and they're really upset. And I don't blame them. Um, and what's really upsetting to me is that how somebody could call in and call their fellow residents and neighbors cold-hearted because they don't agree with them is really upsetting as as well. Um, so it's really unfortunate that what should be a big positive for the town has not is is not because because of all the things I just said. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment?
Uh, Councilman Cummings.
Thank you. Um, I want to just, like, and Robin, I I do appreciate your point. And all the emails that I received from the folks who've been emailing us, I responded to every one of them, telling them from the beginning, I was in favor of two and three families owner occupied being exempt. But it's simple fact that I know what that was like growing up. And also because, you know, forty-four percent of two-family and forty-one percent of three-family units are in the fourth ward. By far, a big majority of all the units, I think, is about fourteen hundred and eighty-eight. And I do remember, and I think, Peter, you can verify this, that we had, I had a community meeting, I brought this up, in which I showed the numbers to let folks know that this was something I think we needed to consider because that is a huge amount. And my my advocacy really, and I mean, advocacy support is for the tenants. I sent every one of the callers in who were called and emailed, simple questions. I asked them that I think, you know, kind of goes to the heart of the matter. And one did get back to me, the others didn't. It says, did you lose any income? Did your property values devalue, go less? How were you adversely impacted by this financially? And I still remember the one response from someone by the property manners, property owners that I felt was really callous, which was we haven't made as much money as we could have. And so when you have that type of uh, attitude, I think it's more about how much can you get? And so the the conversation about, you know, us worrying about the diversity in town and keeping people in town. Our, the value in this town is the housing goes up so much, but people are getting rents that allow them to make money. And the one person who did respond said, no, he didn't lose money. They broke even. I think there's been a lot of opportunities for people to recoup money from the different government things that have gone around. If you do fix up your house, you get tax breaks on it. So, I mean, at the end of the day, I think this ordinance is really as close to fair as possible. And the only reason I could say that is because both parties are not happy. Both parties seem to indicate that they had issues and they gave up something. And while the vacancy decontrol is something that was a hot topic, I think the fact that they originally wanted to go back to be able to raise rents from the beginning of the ordinance from twenty twenty shows how much work was done. And so I think the other thing I think, Ms. Omer, that I think people should know is that the council was actively involved in these negotiations. I don't think, and Robin, you may have not been invited. I certainly was. I'm sure others were. I know Counselor, Counselor Yakabelas, Counselor like, I mean, Counselor Hurlock, the mayor, were at the table at the appropriate times. And I think at the end of the day, what came out or what we resulted in is something that this council put forward with an effort of making sure that those who were actively involved brought to us something that we can agree on. And while it may not be a seven-o vote, I do think this is something that helps those tenants who are rent and those tenants who actually live in Montclair, where a lot of the property owners do not. And so I think my focus was on those who live here and those who are impacted and those I think that I'm, what those who voted me in to support them and help them at all times. So I'm I'm for this ordinance. Could have been better, yes. Could have been worse, yes. But it's something that we pass and I look forward to voting on in the future.
Thank you, sir. Councilman, Councilman Russo.
Yes. This has been a long time coming. Took a lot of years. And I've had observations from the past that I often annoy you all with by appearing to lecture. But, you know, when you got a history with something that you really have a passion for, do you have a knowledge that you want to share? It was voted down by the voters three times during the time that I was in Montclair. It's going back over thirty-four years. The people who voted against it, they would have voted against it. Again, we may never have gotten any rent control if it went to a referendum, though I think the people in Montclair are enlightened enough to understand that some form of rent control, some form of government, rent leveling. And and that's where I come in with my Neptune example again. They call it a rent leveling board with a chair, vice chair, members, only five altogether. And they even have alternates. They have an attorney. They have a secretary. Not a big bureaucracy. The people are already on the government staff helping with this. And we may spend some money to put it together, but it's not gonna be a big heavy burden on anybody. I can assure you of that. I don't want to see that. I'm a bureaucracy fighter. I used to take the complaints about cars for the consumer fears. I used to work for the Public Advocate Citizen Complaint Section where people would complain about government bureaucracy. So I know all about this and my own family owned a three-family home in Newark years ago. We lived in it, however, and everybody should understand, as Councilman Yakabelas said, we purposely from the very beginning always excluded two and three family homes that are owner occupied. That's always been the exclusion. Nobody ever promised we wouldn't cover buildings. Now, in Neptune, they do not cover any buildings over four, under four. So every town is a little variation. I know Carmel called in about the towns around us that were out of step. Well, here's the problem. By not having rent control, we were out of step with those towns. They all have a form of it. It may vary. You may have some exclusions that you like there. But almost all of those towns surrounding us do have a form of rent control. Some of it is stronger than ours, but I think ours is a good example of a compromise as we've been talking about. It's it's a model for others. And we were faced with a lawsuit. We were faced with the expense of a referendum. We were faced with continual fighting over this. And what a relief to know that those who were fighting and those who were suing came together to try to get some sort of compromise. Now, I don't like all of it. I don't like everything in it. I wasn't really at the table, just so you know, but I am a passionate advocate for rent control over the years. And I think the tenants organization is to be praised again for two years of strong work and effort to try to convince people that this needed to be done. So two years ago, we actually got it started. And Mayor Spiller as a councilman then with Counselor Baskerville, myself, Counselor Schlegel and Deputy Mayor Hurlock all put together the best we could. And that's something we did two years ago. Now we've got it even, I think, better. And maybe we could even change it in the future. I mean, I just want to make that clear. I think everybody understands that we can change this as the time goes on to see if it's not working or needs improvements or something's wrong, or maybe somebody's been left out. And now we take their input, but we've got to get this settled now, tonight. So I'm voting yes. And I ask everybody to work together in the future to keep this as a model community for tenants, landlords, especially seniors, because if two and a half percent was not in there for seniors, I wouldn't be voting for this. It's a senior cap of two and a half percent that really was important to me. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, sir. Okay, seeing no other comments. I'll also just echo what I think the general sentiment is. You know, certainly we're mindful of, you know, we wish every single person could be involved of residents in the conversation at any given time. We know that's, you know, obviously not specifically how it works, but representatives representing every group, you know, do do have a voice and had a space in those conversations. You know, things do change. And I think, as everyone has noted, there's pieces that I think many of us would would still love to see in there. There's some that we'd love to see out of there. There's some, you know, those are all the different iterations when you when you come to something that is is a general consensus. As I think Councilman Cummings was one who noted, you know, you know, you leave everybody with a little bit of wanting more and that that probably means you've got to, you've got something there. It it certainly has been a challenge. But first and foremost, the guiding principles I've always noted is that Montclair is a is a very special place in part because of our diversity. And and certainly our affordability is 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 a key piece of making sure we continue our diversity. This is a huge step in that direction. We all know the the prices that we've seen. We've all seen the increase that we've seen, and we know what started this. And certainly with my previous council colleagues, we all know some of the just obscene increases that we were seeing that really triggered the conversation. And, you know, certainly I commend everybody for saying we need to address that exactly how we, you know, every twist and turn, we we obviously have conversations and and desires that, you know, little tweak here, change there. But at the end of the day, I think But at the end of the day, I think we do have something that that finally uh, gets us into space that that will, you know, help protect the affordability of Montclair, help allow people to. To have that that stability in terms of their housing, which is the huge piece, you know, it's a huge piece. If you want to have a family or. Or you're an individual and you're trying to just have some stability in your life, you know, housing is a huge component. Um, you know, with with some of the staples, uh, food and otherwise. So um, with that, you know, appreciate everyone's efforts in here, appreciate everyone. Uh, contributing and appreciate everyone's diverse uh, uh, chain of thinking and and everyone's um, desires on that. But you've gotten to a place here where I think we've got, um, you know, broad uh, support, which I think is a testament to the work that's gone in. So. Thank you, everybody. And with that, uh, Madam Clerk.
Councillor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Councillor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Councillor Russo?
Yes.
Councillor Schlegler?
I'm going to vote yes, but I I wish that I was voting on the original ordinance and not this new one.
Councillor Jacobella's?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes, thank you. Next is ordinance oh twenty two zero six, which is a bond ordinance providing for various capital. Improvements in and by the township of Montclair and the county of Essex, uh, appropriating some uh, seven million nine hundred thousand dollars. And authorizing issuance of seven million nine hundred thousand dollar bonds or notes of the township to finance part of the cost thereof, I so move.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments?
I'll just say.
Okay, councillor Jacobella's?
Yeah, just, uh, Mr. Stafford, I think you have an email from us, but we sent right before the meeting. We, a couple of us do want to have a review conversation about the four point two million. In this for uh, municipal complex, so if we can schedule that with uh, Ms. Rao and Mr. Beneki. To go through that before the nineteenth, before we have to take the final vote on this. Thank you.
Uh, certainly, I I um, haven't seen the email, but I'll certainly relay that uh, that desire um, promptly.
Thank you, sir.
Can I, could I ask a question? What four point two million for the municipal complex? Because. Well, I want to be included in any discussion of that too. I want to make sure that whatever municipal complex we build. As a community center that seniors can use and other residents of Montclair can use, okay? I'm just saying that tonight, so people are on notice. I want a senior center and a community center for all of Montclair and any municipal complex. That we invest in. Thank you.
And also specific pieces to this ordinance? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Councillor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Councillor Price Abrams?
Yes, and I did mean to say a moment ago that I I do intend to be in such a meeting that the manager has arranged, will will arrange for us. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Russo?
Yes, I'd like to be at any meeting also.
Thank you. Councillor Schlegler?
Yes.
Councillor Jacobella's?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Okay, thank you. Next, uh, we've, uh, as was noted, we've, we're pulled ordinance oh twenty oh twenty two zero seven. So next we have ordinance oh. Twenty two zero eight, which is the ordinance to amend section three twenty seven vehicles and traffic of the code of the township of Montclair. Again, this is to make it a right hand only turn, the intersection, we've had a extensive conversation about tonight, and I so move.
I think councillor Schlegler.
I'm sorry.
You want to, you want to second that?
Oh, yes, I do. Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded. Any additional questions, concerns, comments around this? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Councillor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Councillor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Councillor Russo?
Yes.
Councillor Schlegler?
Yes.
Councillor Jacobella's?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes. Next, we've got uh, resolution, resolution R twenty two zero six one, which is a resolution authorizing introduction and approval. Of the twenty twenty two budget for the uh, Montclair Center Business Approver District, and I so move.
Second.
It's removed and seconded. Any questions, concerns or comments? Uh, councillor Jacobella's?
Uh, I think Mr. Stafford raises his hand as well.
I I defer to you, of course, sir. However, I just wanted to let you all know that Mr. Gleason. And Judgey Packard from the bid are in in the queue and I can certainly bring them in for as panelists if anybody has any questions for them. Mayor, would you like that?
Let's see if there's any questions first. Uh, councillor Jacobella's?
Uh, thanks, Mayor. I don't have any particular questions. I had the benefit, we did review this in the Economic Development Committee, so. My comments are really just to commend the bid for the work that they've done, particularly with the strategic planning. Um, I know that that was an extensive process, interviewing stakeholders, coming up with the plan for the future. Really excited about some of the elements that have come out of that strategic plan and the vision. Um, and then direction that that they're headed. Um, I think it's a responsible budget, happy with the with the with the mix and blend of things in it. Um, and excited about, you know, just all the 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 prospects for a vibrant, you know, for continued vibrant. Downtown commercial district that's supported by the infrastructure that, you know, we're providing in terms of uh, parking infrastructure and. And all the great work the counties doing in terms of uh, redoing Bloomfield Avenue. So. Um, it's just to commend the bid board, uh, which I know two of you are councillor Cummings and councillor Price Abrams. Uh, for all the work and to the team who did the strategic plan uh, for the bid going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, councillor Price Abrams?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I too want to acknowledge, I I know. The budget is assessed on on the property owners in the district and, uh, you know, the nonprofit, that is the the group we call the bid. Execute and, you know, as custodians of the space and and. I just also commend, it's an opportunity as a third ward councillor that I serve as a member of the board. Um, you know, I learn from the folks who are. Engaged and I'm often awed by, you know, just the commitments they have to ensuring, again, the vibrant downtown area that we have with creative. Approaches with bringing in other kind of grant dollars, just um, you know, very much um, part of an economic engine of our town. As as much as we have other, um, of course. Nuanced and beautiful districts, um, you know, the bid is just big and uh, there's a lot that goes on there and uh, you know, I'm just pleased to support them. And as they support, again, the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Councillor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Councillor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Councillor Russo?
Yes.
Councillor Schlegler?
Yes.
Councillor Jacobella's?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes, next is the resolution R twenty two.
Hey, Mayor, I just looked at my notes. Um, Peter. You may want to abstain from this. Because you may be asking for some funds for the Outmontclair Festival from the bid. And as a councillor, you may want to, or Paul, if you can give an opinion on that. Cause I just remembered our meeting where you presented to the bid and I want to make sure that we're good in this space, or particularly that you're good in this space.
Uh, thank you. I appreciate that. I think important context is I'm a volunteer. Um, I don't receive any compensation. Uh, whatsoever from Outmontclair. So Paul, knowing that, do you have an opinion?
I I just want to remind everyone pursuant to the uh, local. Project, excuse me, for a second. Pursuant to the local uh, government ethics law. Anybody that might have any elected official that might have an interest in a a personal interest. Or a business interest or a family related interest. Uh, that might be directly or indirectly impacted by a vote or resolution probably should abstain from that. That may be a conflict of interest. So that would have to be your judgment, Peter. Uh, whether that's, whether that impacts you, the uh, law that you should look at. That everybody should take a a look at and review is NJSA forty A colon nine dash twenty two. The specific provision is um. Twenty four, uh, twenty two point five. Code of Ethics for Local Government Officers or Employees Under Direction, Jurisdiction of the Local Finance Board. So if you're involved with any organization that may be, you know, get a benefit uh, or indirectly or or directly. I would, I would suggest that any uh. Counselor that may find themselves in that position would abstain from the vote.
Okay, I um, I mean, that's something to, I think, try and understand a little bit more. I think we have a unique circumstance. Uh, when you're in a local government like this, we're voting on. Tax increases for ourselves, sewer increases for ourselves. Things that affect our streets and curbs and trees on our property, right in front of our property. So there's all sorts of, I think, gray area. But this isn't a close vote at all, so there's no reason to to not err on the side of caution here. So. I don't know procedurally how this works since we already voted, but if I could change my vote. Uh, to abstain, I will do so. And I would just ask, I think in the future for the courtesy of maybe an email before, I don't think this needed to necessarily be a dialogue. Uh, now, it could have been a discussion. I would have appreciated the opportunity to have the conversation with council, um, if this was a concern. Uh, and had made this decision before, uh, but I will change the vote to abstain. Thank you.
So I want to make it clear that when you present it to the bid, that's the first thing I did was talk to you. Because as president of an organization, I shared with you that it's something that you need to consider going forward. How you're going to maneuver that with your council responsibilities. So because I have my notes on here after reading our, uh, at the beginning of packet today, I put it down there to determine that. So we did have that conversation prior to.
Sure, and you also neglected to bring it up last night or the today when we talked as well, so all good, let's move on.
No, I don't want to move on. I want to make it clear when we spoke last night, I actually, if there's a couple of things on your mind, I was um, at the final four. And I told you I had to go, but my point is, I think it's more important that we consider that when we're in positions like this. That we are prepared for people to just make sure that we're doing the right thing. And so, as you said, you know, first you were volunteer, you're president of an organization, doing a great job with the organization. And I just wanted to make clear that that this was something that I brought up. It's not a hit on you, Peter, it's just a matter of clarification that this is something that you should have done before.
Okay, so I don't hear objection to uh, procedurally, we did vote on this already. Um, we do have the votes recorded. Uh, but that said, without objection, I'm going to say that, uh, I I believe I heard councillor Jacobella say abstain. Uh, so is that is that correct? Is there objection to my interpretation of that?
I'm only questioning, Paul, isn't it a recusal? Because of perception, not abstention, a recusal. I've done it many times over the years.
Uh, Bob, I think the abstention is is as effective as a recusal. He's not voting on on this this issue.
Any objection to the abstention, to hearing abstention? I see none, I hear none. Madam Clerk, please note, uh, it was noted abstention. Okay, moving on, please, let's go to uh, next is. Uh, I believe I have a resolution R twenty two zero six two, resolution to clearing an emergency and directing that ordinance oh twenty two zero four. Two men, section three twenty seven, uh, vehicles and traffic code take effect immediately. This is the four way stop sign. As Mr. Stafford, you noted, we then can put back up after taking down and putting back up and taking down. So with that, I so move.
Second.
It's moved and seconded. Any questions, concerns or comments on it? Uh, Madam Clerk.
Councillor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Councillor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Councillor Russo?
Yes.
Councillor Schlegler?
Yes.
Councillor Jacobella's?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes, next is resolution R twenty two zero six three, which is the bills list resolution. Uh, councillor Schlegler, would you like to do the honors?
Yes, whereas invoices against the township of Montclair in favor of the following persons, the amounts. Set opposite their respective names have been received duly audited and found correct. Now therefore be resolved by the council of the township of Montclair, the county of Essex, that said invoices be, and they are hereby ordered paid. And that checks be drawn by the finance department to the order of such persons for the amounts respectively. And here and after stated on the schedule attached hereto and made a part here of. This bill is just dated April fifth, the year of twenty twenty two, for the amount of six million five hundred fifty one thousand one hundred sixteen dollars and twenty seven cents. And I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Are there any questions, concerns or comments? Councillor Jacobella's?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, Mr. Stafford, uh, page seven, uh, these these should just hopefully just be a few quick things. Uh, PO two two zero zero five two zero, Glen Close Supply Company, it just says Misk Aluminum Blanks and Sign Faces, four thousand ninety dollars. Which is what that is.
Those are aluminum blanks are and sign faces are what the DCS uses to fabricate signs like uh, no parking here to corner, uh, et cetera.
Got it. Thank you. Um, page eight, Integrated Builders, PO two two zero zero seven four two, Montclair Historical Society, three thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Those purchases were made by the Health Department with grant funding from a Partners for Health Grant for. The Montclair Community Farm at that location. It is various uh, kitchen equipment, electrical outlets, and I believe a ceiling fan.
Thank you. Just checking my notes real quick. Uh, that was it. Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Councillor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Councillor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Councillor Russo?
Yes.
Councillor Schlegler?
Yes.
Councillor Jacobella's?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Stafford, if you can do uh, the review items for for uh, review of the items for the next one, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Following an appropriate bidding process. On February sixteen of two thousand twenty one, by resolution R dash twenty one dash zero two five, the township awarded a contract. To the lowest responsible responsive bidder, quality facility solutions for the provision of cleaning services to township owned facilities. The contract was for a one year period with a township option to extend for two additional years at the same cost per year. Based upon the performance of the vendor and based upon the likelihood that putting such a contract on the street for a bidding process at this time would, given the current supply chain issues. And the cost of fuel increases over the recent months, almost certainly result in an increase in pricing. Recommendation is made too, and the resolution in item one would authorize the exercising of that township option to extend for two additional years. At the amount of one hundred and thirteen thousand four hundred and seventy three dollars and fourteen cents for same. NJSA forty A colon eleven dash four point one BJ permits competitive contracting to be used to procure vending machine services as a concession. NJSA forty A colon eleven dash four point three A requires that to initiate such competitive contracting. A governing body shall pass a resolution authorizing same. Given the township's need for vending machine services in its various township owned facilities, item number two is a resolution that would authorize the use of competitive contracting. For vending machine services. The township has a need to retain general veterinary services, including services serving as the township's animal shelters veterinarian of record. For several years, these services have been provided by Cameron Animal Hospital. Based upon the provider's effective and efficient services, recommendation is made too, and the resolution in item number three would authorize a professional services agreement. With Cameron Animal Hospital in an amount not to exceed thirty six thousand dollars for a period of one year. NJSA forty A colon eleven dash four point one BJ. Again, permits competitive contracting to be used to procure skateboard instruction services as a concession. NJSA forty A colon eleven dash four point three A requires that to initiate competitive contracting, a governing body shall pass a resolution authorizing same. Given the township's need to provide skateboarding instruction services to its residents, item number four is a resolution that would authorize the use. Of competitive contracting for providing skateboarding instruction. Item five is a resolution that would authorize the acceptance of a hazardous discharge site remediation fund.
Can I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mrs. Stafford. Um, would would there be any objection with folks for moving um. Item four, uh, just to be able to get the recreation department to work with the third parties uh, on the process sooner. I know, you know, spring is approaching quickly and they want to get, you know, try and get the RFP out and get lessons up and going as soon as possible.
So I I I would agree with that.
Without objection, we'll we'll move resolution authorizing the use of competitive contracting for providing skateboard instruction attached with Montclair. Seeing no objection, hearing no objection. Seeing no objection, hearing no objection, so it's moved. Any questions, concerns, comments? Seeing none, um, contracting. So let's do a vote. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Yes.
Counselor Schleger?
Yes.
Counselor Yakovales?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes.
Item five is a resolution that would authorize the acceptance of a hazardous discharge site remediation fund public entity program grant. In an amount of up to thirty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars through the New Jersey Economic Development Authority and the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. For remedial investigation of the former South End Pyramid property at three ninety-nine Orange Road. The Montclair Police Department between December seven, two thousand twenty-one, and December fourteen, two thousand twenty-one. Conducted a traffic study of the intersection of Mount Hebron Road and Valley Road and resultantly recommended. Installation of an overhead trombone-type traffic signal to improve safety and the flow of traffic. Request was made of the County of Essex by the township for installation of same, and the county responded that the installation would take several months to complete. Item number five is a resolution that would, the township having determined that accelerating the installation of the traffic signal is necessary for the safety of pedestrians. Bicyclists and motorists traveling through the intersection, request that the county accelerate the installation.
Sorry, I'm gonna interrupt again.
Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so this is something that, uh, Deputy Mayor Herlock and I have been working on for a few weeks. Um, so I want to thank the staff, first of all, for preparing this. And I think there's a couple of important things to mention. One, we've, you know, and sort of similar to the what's happening at Watchon Plaza, there's been a lot of interest in outpouring. And a petition for here, but again, this is one of. Last I checked, sixty-four intersections or streets that are in some process of traffic study. Um, with the result or pending result. And in the case of this intersection, what this resolution does is it asks the county to accelerate the installation of the, the new traffic light that's recommended. But I think equally important too, there's a recommendation that we look at, um, Mount Hebron, uh, for, um, school zone designation. And I know those measurements are being taken by community services and they're, they're working with the Law Department on drafting a. Ordinance to, in, to introduce in terms of creating a school zone there. And then the third piece is to just mention that, um, continued monitoring, monitoring is still taking place in terms of speeds. To see if there's any recommendations to, uh, the speed limit as well. So, uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor, for your collaboration, uh, on this.
Uh, Mr. Manager, I, I sent you an email earlier. That, um, the previous council actually approved a, uh, traffic measure on the corner of Elm and Lincoln Street that the county was supposed to install. So you can go back to that and make sure that that's also on the docket for this, because that's something that was approved and was supposed to be done already.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Mayor Fink.
Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Um, I, I just also want to thank Counselor Yakovales for his collaboration on this and taking the lead in. Making the contacts and working with me on this as well. It's something that I'd like to move this evening so that we can get this thing moving quicker and get this up and running. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Sure.
Mayor, I'd just like to, I'd just like to thank my two colleagues for working on it, but don't forget I'm an at-large councilman also who represented that area. And it took ten years to get a traffic light at Grove and Alexander, ten years after the death of a resident. Who was hit by our own garbage truck twenty-four years ago. So these things take a lot of time. I'm glad we're going to try and ask the county to accelerate, but. I'd like to be involved and included in some of these things that I definitely have had an interest in over the years. Thank you.
Okay, well, I'm sure, uh, Deputy Mayor and each councilperson will, will consider that, I assume. Um, appreciate that. Uh, without objection, we will move this one. A- as we know, the county does have a meeting on April twentieth. Um, so, so we should have, you know, good time to get these things put, put through, but let's move it through now and then we can, you know, have it on the docket of things to transfer over to them. We've got a couple of them actually that they've got to get. So. Uh, without objection, we're going to move that, seeing no objection. Uh, I think this can be a voice vote. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Abstentions? Not hearing any. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
On March eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, four bids were received and reviewed in connection with the Glen Ridge Avenue Bike Lane and Roadway Improvement Project. This project funded by two thousand twenty Essex County Community Development Block Grant Funding. Includes milling and resurfacing of Glen Ridge Avenue between Bloomfield Avenue and Forest Street. Installation of a new dedicated bike lane along the southern side of Glen Ridge Avenue. And installation of new traffic signage pavement, uh, signage and ADA curb ramp improvements. Based upon analysis of the bid received, recommendation is made too, and this resolution in item number seven. Would award a contract to the lowest responsible responsive bidder. D S Meyer Enterprises of Waltwick, New Jersey, in the amount of one hundred and four thousand, one hundred and one dollars and fifty-two cents. And J S A forty A colon eleven dash thirty-six-two permits municipalities to transfer property no longer needed to another New Jersey contracting unit. Such as another municipality. The Department of Utilities, having purchased in two thousand twenty-one a vehicle with a two-thousand gallon sewer jetter to flush our sewer lines. Have determined that its two thousand seven vehicle with a combination sewer cleaner and vacuum manhole cleaner is no longer needed. Further, the thirteen-year-old vehicle has forty-seven thousand, five hundred and eighty-three miles. And its machine has been used for five thousand, five hundred and seventy-one hours. Multiple expensive repairs have been made to the vehicle and its machine and parts for repairs are becoming scarce. Glen Ridge has offered one hundred and ten thousand dollars for the vehicle, which is an acceptable figure and appropriate to the market. The sale would be an as-is, where-is. Uh, and item number eight is a resolution that would authorize the transfer by sale of this vehicle to the borough of Glen Ridge. For years, the Department of Utilities has used a vendor to provide engineering and programming services for its SCADA system. As a matter of due diligence, the department solicited and reviewed quotes for the provision of such services. Based upon that review, recommendation is made too, and the resolution in item nine would authorize the award of a professional services agreement to Innatech Industrial. Of Clifton for engineering and program, programming services for the Department of Utilities SCADA system. For a one-year period in an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand, nine hundred and three dollars.
Mrs. Stafford, sorry to interrupt. Uh, what is a SCADA system? I was looking through to try and understand what the acronym was and I, I couldn't find it.
SCADA stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. It enables our Department of Utilities operators to access actionable data and manage our equipment remotely.
This is Gary doing it on his phone. Yes, he showed me. Thank you.
Item, item number ten is a resolution that would pursuant to N J S A two B colon twenty-five dash four. Reappoint Gina DeVito Esquire to serve as substitute municipal prosecutor for a term commencing on January one, two thousand twenty-two and ending on December thirty-one of two thousand twenty-two. Similarly, item number eleven is a resolution that would pursuant to N J S A two B colon twenty-five dash four, reappoint Maite Geta Esquire. To serve as chief municipal prosecutor for the same term. The township received a certified local government grant from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection. State Historic Preservation Office, also known as SHIPO. In the amount of forty-nine thousand, forty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars to prepare a cultural resources survey of the Upper Montclair commuter area. Resultantly, the township sought to engage a professor, professional historic preservation firm. To complete the project per the scope of work approved by SHIPO by issuing a request for proposals. Two responsive proposals were received and reviewed by the Historic Preservation Committee, Commission Grants Committee in consultation with SHIPO. Based upon that review, recommendation is made too, and the resolution in item number twelve. Would award a contract in an amount not to exceed forty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars to the firm of Connolly and Hickey Historical Architects of Cranford. To perform the referenced work. On August eighteen of two thousand nineteen, a consent order was signed by Judge Gardner. Declaring the township's housing element and implementing ordinances. That include a local housing rehabilitation program to provide, to provide affordable housing to low-income and moderate-income households constitutionally sufficient. In two thousand twenty, after an appropriate proposal process and analysis, as well as a review and recommendation by the Economic Development Committee. The township retained Community Grants Planning and Housing. Also known as C, G, P, and H, the township's Affordable Housing Administrative Agent. To administer that local housing rehabilitation program. The firm worked closely with township staff to develop a comprehensive policy and procedures manual for the program. And initiated a successful marketing campaign resulting in forty applications and the completion of one rehabilitation project to date. The firm currently has ten new applications for the program. The firm's current contract expires on April thirty of two thousand twenty-two, and based upon the firm's work. Recommendation is made too, and the rec, and the resolution in item number thirteen would authorize the execution of a professional services agreement. With C, G, P, and H for the administration of the township's housing rehabilitation program for the period of May one, two thousand twenty-two. Through and including April thirty, two thousand twenty-three, in an amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars. Item number fourteen is a resolution that would pursuant to N J S A two B colon twenty-four dash four. Reappoint Peter D. Russo Esquire to the position of municipal public defender. For a term commencing January one of this year, ending on December thirty-one of the same.
Mr. Manager, Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify that there's no relation between me and that nice man named Russo, just like I was never related to. Our former police chief, Tom Russo. A lot of Russos in town, but they're not related to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Similarly, item fifteen is a resolution that would pursuant to N J S A two B colon twenty-four dash four, reappoint William R. Freed Esquire to the. Position of alternate municipal public defender for the same term.
Um, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager, again, I, I know Mr. Freed, he's a very great attorney up at Verona. But he, I think he was hired under the auspices of our previous town attorney, um. Um, Ira, now, all I want to make sure of, I'm just asking this procedurally because it's important to me. Uh, we're paying people to work for our town. As alternate attorneys and as staff members, but if, if we have a very good town attorney now and assistant attorney who are now. Certainly our town attorney's been extended for about a year. I want to make sure he concurs with the hiring because I know this name was recommended. By Ira and Ira had told me that he's a very good attorney. I met him, I talked to him, I think he's good. But I just want to make sure Paul Burr, our new attorney, is recommending this. That's all.
Mr. Russo, being that this is a personnel matter, I, I don't think it's appropriate for me to comment in public on this matter. So, uh, maybe I'll comment in, in the closed session.
Okay, thank you.
On April twenty of two thousand twenty-one, by Resolution R dash twenty-one dash zero-six-five. And following an appropriate proposal process, this governing body awarded a contract for grant writing services to the Aubrey Group of Elizabeth. In an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars for the period of April twenty-one, twenty twenty-one through April twenty, twenty twenty-two. Based upon the exemplary work by the firm during that period, recommendation is made too, and the resolution in item sixteen would extend the firm's contract for grant writing services. In an amount not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars.
Hey, I have the, kind of a, ask a question about this.
Uh, you, you can, I just saw Councilman Price Abrams hand up first the Councilwoman Cummings, but her and then.
I'll defer to Counselor Cummings' question. Go ahead.
No, go ahead. You're first.
I'd like you to ask your question, then I'll decide if I'm going to move my piece. Go ahead.
Oh, so, um, and my question is, we're giving them an increase of around thirty thousand dollars. And what did we get for the fifteen thousand that they brought in, um, on their own? And what are expectations for the increase?
Yeah, Councilman Cummings, that's a great question. Uh, to date, they have brought in upwards of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And those were, what projects? I know they got, um, that's what I'm trying to figure out. What did they bring in?
Sure. They got the, uh, Hate Crimes Program, three hundred thousand dollars. They got the Office of Small Business Advocacy, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So my concern is with the, particularly with the Office of Small Business, that was something we led them to get. And so if we're going to be increasing this, this amount. Um, I hope we have some assurances that they will be able to bring in. Money on their own and not things that we asked them to basically go right up, you know, the, uh, proposal to get the money.
Well, just, just, this is a note, Councilman, we on the Education Committee meet with them regularly. They come to us and present all of the grants available out there. We note to them, along with staff, which grants we'd like them to pursue. They don't pursue any without that direction because there's obviously a cost to it. So when we direct them to go pursue that grant, they then do write up the grant.
Okay, so, yeah, this is a big increase for me, so I just want to make that on the record.
Okay. And, and I just note, uh, I would be supportive of an increase up to seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's how much they brought in for us. So, uh, with that, Councilwoman Price Abrams.
Yeah, I know I do, uh, thank you. Want to, I mean, I was inclined to move this tonight. Um, just to the extent that, um, they have done extensive work beyond, um, I think what. The time they've spent at their billable rates. Um. But that said, it's not just if we, if we said, what would you imagine, and they go get it, it's, it's, there's a lot of skill to writing these and. You know, they even have specialization among members of their team who have particular expertise, maybe in an environmental area or in an education area or civil rights. You know, they seem to have. A very strong team and, uh, I didn't know them before we began to work with them. And as the mayor just noted, two very significant grants that we've received. Um, just going to get it doesn't mean you get it. It's really, um, a lot of skill in how to write these and what to include and, and how to frame a narrative. So. I, I really thank and commend them for the work they've done for us so far and think we will only be serving ourselves well to, uh, continue with them. So I don't know if there's appetite to move it now or we can let it, um, hold. I don't know, Mayor, if you have a thought on that.
No, I mean, I'm, I'm fine moving now, as I noted. Uh, I, I just have the experience. I know my previous council colleagues do as well. We had a previous grant writer, won't mention their name, but we had them for a number of years. Um, and we've seen more dollars brought in by these grant writers in a short period of time than we did with the others in three to. Somebody help me out. Robin, you remember three to four years of the other one, whatever it was. So, um, you know, it's massively different. So with that, uh. Councilwoman, I'm absolutely, you know, open. If you'd like to move it tonight, I'd be happy to second it.
Okay, so I so move.
All right, my second. Any questions, concerns, or comments?
Just one comment, Mayor.
Councilman Yakovales?
Um, I, I think the ROI has been fantastic. So I agree on that. I think, you know, and I, I'm not part of the committee, but just a suggestion. Um, that we could also just look at, and I'm sure it is being looked at, but as a metric for success. Is are they bringing in dollars or can they bring in dollars that offset existing spending versus, you know, in addition to, uh, dollars that would give us. New programs. I think that would be a big help, especially from a capital perspective, as our capital budget, as we're going to get into, is, is pretty strained.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, and, and you're absolutely right that, uh, my two council colleagues will note, we have absolutely been talking about some of those discussions on specific, specific capital, uh, projects as well. So, yes.
We have. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. If, I can also add, I have rarely worked with, um, an organization, a company or. Um, that is so incredibly organized. The, the, I, I am amazed by them. They, um, they're on top of things. They follow up. They, their, um, agendas are, 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 they're just, I. Can't say enough good things about their work ethics. They're, they're terrific.
All right, thank you. So we've got a motion. Uh, I don't see any other questions, concerns, or comments. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Cummings?
No.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Counselor Price Abrams?
Yes.
Counselor Russo?
Abstain.
Counselor Schleger?
Yes.
Counselor Yakovales?
Yes.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes. Uh, next is a resolution, uh. I'm sorry.
Excuse me, pardon me, I'm sorry. I actually wanted to revisit one other item in our pack. I just wanted to let the manager finish his list first, but, um. The resolution, uh, is item number seven. That would award the contract for the twenty twenty Essex County C D B G program for the. Grand Lake Glen Ridge Avenue Bike Lane and Roadway Improvements. Um, our planner has emphasized there was a certain amount of urgency about expending the dollars, um, I believe. Either I don't know if you remember, um, by the end of June. I mean, there was a certain timeframe on this one, and it strikes me more than even some of the others of having a certain amount of urgency if we might move it sooner than later. So I would, I'm moving that we take action on this one tonight.
I would second you on that. I think I I remember the urgency. I just don't remember the specific timeline.
All right, so it's in, you know, look, in the interest of, uh, uh, may as well, uh, you know, get it captured on the front end in case, uh, you know, it's it's too late. So it's it's been moved and seconded. Uh, any other questions, concerns, comments on this? Seeing none.
This is the, um, I want to make make sure this is the, uh, one lane going down to, is it Forest? That's the conversation that we had with Janice last year, correct?
Um, no, this one's start, Peter, where does it start? It goes down to where with the redirecting of, um, Glen Ridge Avenue, it ends at Bloomfield Avenue. Peter, where does it start quite?
You're saying the same thing.
Are we? Okay.
The installation of a new dedicated bike lane along the southern side of Glen Ridge Avenue and the in, um, uh, milling and resurfacing of Glen Ridge Avenue between Bloomfield Avenue and Forest Street.
Right, right.
And installation of new traffic signage, pavement signage, and eighty-eight curb ramp improvements.
So just you both. Yep, it's the same, just going in from different angles. Directions. All right, seeing no other questions or comments, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Cummings?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
Yes.
Councilwoman Price Abrams?
Yes.
Council Russo?
Yes.
Council Schlegel?
Yes.
Council Yakovales?
Yes, and I I do want to say I'm sorry. I was, um, thinking my comments would be uh, next time, but I do want to say that I think it's important that this be looked at as a demonstration project. Um, a one-block bike lane is not helping anybody get from point A to point B. Um, it's the start of something. Um, and, uh, thank you to the manager in terms of, uh, allowing me to work with, uh, the planner, um, Councilwoman Price Abrams. We've got a working group, um, of a rep from the Planning Board, the Township Planning Department, the Business Improvement in District Property Owners, um, us and, uh, Bike Walk Montclair and then New Jersey Bike Walk Coalition to now take a step back and look at how do we responsibly connect Bloomfield Avenue or Downtown Montclair to eventually what will be the Essex Hudson Greenway along Glen Ridge Avenue. So it'll be a longer, uh, project, a longer-term project that will be ideally integrated into Lackawanna Plaza or at least alongside of Lackawanna Plaza. But my point just being that there's a lot of work to be done to to plan this out and to the point about the grant writers looking for grant dollars to be able to grant fund, um, this work. So it's not out of pocket for the town as well. So excited about this, but don't want to raise expectations too much. This is a striping project. It's a demonstration lane. Um, people are going to get a sense of what a bike lane would look like. Um, and it's, uh, you know, I think it's just a exciting start, but it's, uh, you know, going to take a lot of work until it becomes actual productive, uh, bike lane that's useful for connecting points of interest. Yes.
Yeah, and we we had this conversation when this first came up. It's very important that, you know, the residents, as you get further south on Glen Ridge Avenue are aware of. So we should make sure that they're educated to make sure they see how this will impact them. Um, particularly once you get down by, uh, by the Bay Street Train Station currently. Because the seniors had some concern who lived in, uh, Sixty Pine Street and some of the apartment renters on the same street. So let's make sure that everyone, um, who have to live in the area, not just use it as a transportation hub, have an input on what is ultimately decided as we move forward.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving to our last item, uh, for for, uh, for executive session. It's a resolution to rescind the resolution extending the invitation of the sister city, Cheterpovitz, uh, and this one, as everybody knows, I've, uh, had sent a letter, um, to, uh, my fellow mayor in Cheterpovitz. Uh, it certainly, uh, brought me no joy to have to do that. Obviously, it was not that long ago. We were, you know, congratulating them on on their anniversary, and certainly I sent them a video message, but certainly, um, you know, when we see the unprovoked attack, uh, by by by, you know, President Putin, um, and and certainly, uh, what that has meant to the people of Ukraine and and certainly devastation, uh, felt it important to reach out and, uh, you know, to, uh, to share our frustrations, to share our our dissatisfaction, to share our, uh, you know, outrage with what's been going on. And certainly, we understand the position that many of the Russian people and likely the mayor there are in. Um, but but we also know that, uh, you know, we need also need to stand with the people of Ukraine and what they are facing. Um, I can also say that, uh, since that, I I I've had connection from, um, the the, uh, consul general from Ukraine, um, reached out, uh, specifically about Sister City, uh, you know, supporting, saying, yes, you know, move forward uh, with eliminating that Sister City relationship, appreciative of us doing so. Um, you know, I checked with the clerk to see if there's been any response to my communications, which were sent by email and also hard mail, just to uh, see whatever way we would get some type of response. There's been nothing. Um, with that, I think appropriate amount of time gone by, I've gotten residents who've reached out, you know, noting that communication is important, and I've noted it is and and still would remain if there's any desire to communicate. But the the formal relationship of a sister city at this time, uh, with everything that is happening, I don't think is appropriate. It doesn't mean that, uh, you know, the conversation shouldn't continue to occur, but, uh, at this time, the the that is important in terms of what we represent to the people of Ukraine. So, uh, at this moment, I'm going to move to formally rescind our sister city, uh, relationship, and I so move.
Second, and Mayor, can I can I just say, I'd like, I mean, we we're going to read the whole thing tonight or, uh?
No.
The resolution tonight?
We're gonna, we're gonna do it. We're not gonna, I don't know what you mean by that. We're we're moving all of these without reading the whole piece, but I, you know, we'll be moving. My letter, I think, speaks for itself. I've I've noted it before. Um, I think it has been public, but, uh, you know, this would obviously rescind our sister city relationship at this juncture.
I'm glad you want to do it tonight because my wife and I, of course, have been very involved with this. She's Polish background and it's gotten so horrendous just today and yesterday, seeing what went on in in, uh, Ukraine. I just didn't, I didn't want to see us cut our relationship completely, but we have to do this. And so I'm very supportive of your efforts in trying to move this along tonight. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions, concerns, comments? Councilman Yakovels, then Councilwoman, uh, Price Abrams.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, in the beginning, I have to be honest, I was, you know, of course raging angry like everybody else was and was thinking we should do this. But I, you know, cooler heads prevail over time, and I actually think it's a mistake. Um, the Sister Cities International Organization says right on their website, please do not suspend or end your sister city relationships with the Russian city, um, partner. They're they're asking us not to take that action. I'm also concerned that, you know, in the resolution, it says the the mayor, um, in Russia didn't write back and and just from a practical perspective, I don't think anybody in that country right now is going to speak up against President Putin. I don't think they're going to write back to Montclair, New Jersey and say, you know, we we're sorry for what's happening. Um, you know, he's he's obviously not tolerating free speech in that country. And so I think we just have to give them the benefit of the doubt in terms of not responding that they can't. Um, I think it's a mistake to sever the relationship, to sever the ties. I would prefer that we suspended or paused, not severed. Um, I think, you know, to the point about cooler heads prevailing, we we, and I've struggled with this. I'm being honest with you. I was immediately wanting to sever this in the beginning. Um, I just think it's a lot of people have reached out to me to say where's it's in these times that we have to be holding on to diplomacy and holding on to hope and keeping the dialogue open, um, and those channels open. Um, and I think this just sends a signal, the wrong signal, um, to the people of that city. Um, and I'd like to see us maintain the relationship in hopes that we can have, you know, influence on one each on each other, which was, I think, the original intent of Sister Cities. Anyway, it was there was a was one of many tools in the toolkit, uh, for diplomacy. So I would, I would oppose this tonight.
Certainly, Councilman, I I get your your point on this. Um, on this one, I don't think I could disagree more. I hear you. Um, but when we talk about, um, you know, keeping a relationship in conversation, much like, uh, at the national level where we engage in conversation with the counterparts in Russia, um, you know, we also, though, do not, you know, you know, hesitate to impose sanctions and to, uh, to take action that 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 expresses not only our displeasure, that is not even remotely strong enough word, but our outrage as to what's going on. And while we hear that, I got to tell you, you know, putting it in the backdrop of, you know, the hand-signed letter from Oleski Oldubov, who is the Consul General in the Ukraine, when he notes, as you are reading this letter, our people, schools, kindergartens, hospitals, infrastructure, remain under intense shelling, shootings, rocket strikes by the Russian Armed Forces, the largest of the European continent. We know that for sure now most inhumane army in the world. These are dire times for Ukraine. I'm writing to you with the following request. I call on you and your citizens in your esteemed city to express your solidarity with Ukrainians and end your sister city's cooperation with Russia's Cheterpovitz with a view to stop and or suspend it. I'm confident that this inspiring movement initiated by, uh, others, um, you know, will be, will will have some effect. The modern concept of sister cities is rooted in the Second World War, the way of establishing solidarity between cities and allied countries that went through similar devastating events. Um, but, you know, we now count on supportive voices by responsible members of the initial community. I thank you at advance. And he goes on and on in a in a multi-page letter to me. I mean, I got to tell you, hear what you're saying. I'm not saying we shouldn't talk, you know, if the mayor reaches out, I'm open to it. If there's conversations to be had, happy to. We'll continue to send letters expressing outrage and hoping there's something they can do in their end. But to maintain the symbolic relationship of a sister city at this time, when, you know, people are being killed in the streets and bodies left there and literally Ukrainians literally are reaching out, asking for our help and to suspend this at this time. Um, I I I couldn't disagree more. I think we need to suspend the relationship at this time.
Can I ask for clarification, though? Are we suspending? Because this is rescinding the resolution. So this is terminating. This isn't.
Terminating, terminating, and of course, it could be instituted at any given time, but terminating our sister city relationship at this time.
Because I would support suspending, but I don't support this, which says rescinding, which would terminate it.
Yes, okay. But just terminating at this time is what the motion would be. Councilwoman Price Abrams.
Thanks. Um, I appreciate this conversation. I mean, I've also, I mean, everyone's troubled. This whole situation is, you know, beyond, um, horrific. So what should we do that's meaningful? I I was thinking really that a sister city relationship is really with the people, and I don't think the people of Cheterpovitz or much of Russia are in line with this, whether they know it fully. I am you know, moved by the letter that you just shared, that I didn't have the benefit of, uh, on my first reading of this. You know, and really that the appeal coming from the consul general, um, of Ukraine. And in that sense, I, you know, my my wish and my heart, my loyalties would be with them, certainly as we all feel at this time. Um, yeah, I mean, it's just, it it's just, it's terrible in every direction. So what should what should be the symbolic message? And if if in any way that gets through to anyone in Russia, that it's just one more thing shutting down. Um, in terms of anything like support, i- it's just one more symbolic or or in any way meaningful thing, I guess, then that's the right thing to do. But I I really am, as probably many of us are, just conflicted over such a thing. It's meant to be, um, connections between people and in no way, um, what Putin might be doing, but, um, I just wanted to offer those thoughts of of sort of conflict about it.
Mayor, if I could clarify for Councilwoman and maybe Councilman, uh, Yakobales, the final point in this ordinance, this resolution says, be it further resolved that if and when Russian military aggression toward Ukraine ceases and peace between the countries is restored, the township will seek to reestablish a sister city relationship with the government and people of the city of Syria. So we're saying we're going to reestablish when this ends. We have to send a very strong message. I agreed with that idea of suspending a week or two ago. This is horrific, horrific what's going on. It is unacceptable for us. I'd like to see us somehow help that country repel this aggression. And I I'm I'm all in favor of selling, you know, uh, planes. I don't want to see us have a, you know, closed sky thing because it's really dangerous, but give them every bit of help we can. And this is a psychological act. It's simply saying, when you stop what you're doing, we will reestablish the relationships. It's a nice city. I talked to the mayor there when they came out years ago, great people. I know they can't speak out. You're right, Peter, they can't speak out. But they should be able to speak out. And this Putin is 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 in the category with Hitler, Mussolini. I mean, Stalin, this man is so bad. I don't know how anybody could even be thinking that we should have any relationship with with Russia. We have to cut off every possible relationship in order to force them, and then we can reestablish. So that's why I would not support this if it didn't say at the end that we are going to reestablish when they pull out and stop. That's the key phrase. So please think about this being a strong message from all of us to the Russian leadership. Of course, it's not the people of Cheterpovitz. It's the Russian leadership. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman, uh, Cummings.
Yes, um, I don't want to sound insensitive, but really, I wish we would focus on Montclair. And I mean, I get it. It's a great way to to show compassion. But, you know, we've, this is like the third or fourth time we've taken on national world issues when we should really be focusing on what's going on in our township. Um, it sounds good. It looks good. It's a great press release. But at the end of the day, we're not going to determine what is being flown over, what's being bombed. And we, I think you guys have done a great job with the fundraisers to send things over there. But, you know, at some point, I'd wish that we would just get out of this thing of getting outside of our township. And I say that sensitive with sensitivity to what's going on over there and also the sensitivity with what's going on in other townships around the country and cities. But, you know, we keep going down this this rabbit hole of putting ourselves out there for things that, quite frankly, I look at nothing more of a press releases.
Well, I think the key one in this one is that we have a unique situation of we have a sister city relationship. And when the Ukraine, in the midst of being attacked by Russia, takes the time to write a letter to me asking that we sever this relationship as well. I mean, words matter and actions matter, and and they think it's important enough to matter for them. Um, it matters to me.
Don't doubt your sincerity or reason. I'm just equating this to other things that we've done in the past. I get this sister city action totally. I'm just saying, we need to really start, in my opinion, concerning ourselves with going on in our township.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? Uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I I went back and forth on this issue quite a bit, and obviously, there's a lot of emotion here and um, there's a lot going on, quite frankly. I I've always been of the philosophy that you try to stay involved as much as possible to to influence. And I, obviously, Mr. Spiller, you and I have worked together over the last ten years, and we've worked very closely. We haven't always agreed. But I have a great deal of respect for you, and I I hope you feel the same about me. And I, the letter that you just shared, um, was, uh, was very moving. I I tend to believe with a lot of these relationships that staying involved and having that, you know, that relationship where you're trying to influence and you don't necessarily shut down those avenues of communication, um, are important. And history has shown us that, you know, many, many times. So this one is is very tough for me, and I've heard from a lot of constituents on both sides of the issue, stay involved, try to influence. How dare you? Pull out immediately. You need to do it now. So this one, um, I'm going to vote accordingly when the time comes, but I I just wanted to get that out there and put that on the record, that the relationship sometime, and haven't been involved with many of the sister cities. Um, and, you know, issues come up all the time, uh, in them as well. Um, that this this one was a close call for me. And, um, respect both sides' opinions, quite frankly. Again, it's a very emotional issue. I just wanted to put that out there as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Absolutely. Thank you, sir. Any other questions, concerns, comments? All right, seeing none. I'll just end end my comments again. We're saying, at the end of the day, when we say we're doing all we can, literally, Ukraine has reached out asking us to end this relationship. With that, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Cummings?
No.
Deputy Mayor Herlock?
I'm staying.
Councilwoman Price Abrams?
Yes.
Council Russo?
Yes.
Council Schlegel?
Yes.
Council Yakovales?
No.
Mayor Spiller?
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you from Christine.
We do all want to keep Christine happy, Councilor Russo, we know that. All right, with that, I want to thank everybody for going through those pieces. We do have a matter for executive session, so we'll move into that at this juncture. So we have a resolution authorizing executive session without the public being permitted to attend in accordance with NJSA A ten colon four dash twelve B. The subject is personnel, excuse me, and contract negotiations, and I so move. It's moved in seconded, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Councilwoman.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Will we come out of executive session to make comments?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, absolutely. Okay, um, we vote all, yeah, so we are, we are going into executive session. Rick, please let us know when we're, we're cleared in an executive session. And then as the councilwoman noted, of course, we, we come back out of exec session. We'll have all, any of our comments and certainly any action that we would choose to take.
Thank you, Rick. Appreciate that. And thank you to everybody as well. Moving out of executive session, I would like to move appointments to the planning board, which includes reappointments and also movement of the alternates and appointment to an alternate position. And I so move.
I seconded.
Move them seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Post tensions. Thank you. Second, I'd like to move a board of adjustments as well, a reappointment movement of the alternates up and also filling of one of the alternate positions remain. And I so move.
Aye.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much to both of those. Next, I'll go around the horn. Let's start with you, township manager.
Thank you, Mayor, but I don't have anything beyond what I've already said tonight.
Okay, Mr. Deputy Manager.
Just one thing. The state of New Jersey has lost a governmental icon recently with the passing of former East Orange Mayor Bob Bowser. Bob was, I think he was the 12th mayor of East Orange, and he served multiple terms. And he was also a coach in Essex County softball football league in which I played for his team. But Bob was a man that anyone could reach out, especially an upcoming future elected official. And he helped everyone. And I think we are all, all who knew him were lesser for it. So my deepest condolences to the Bowser family with this loss. That's it, man.
Thank you, sir. And certainly. Mr. Attorney, township attorney?
Yes, Mayor. So a little off kilter, but I haven't gotten a chance to speak to my father. And today is his 88th birthday, so I want to wish him a happy birthday. He's a Monclerian lifetime resident, born in Mountainside Hospital in 1934, MHS class of 1953. And also, thank you, Mr. Scantlebag, for mentioning that. A very good friend of Mayor Bowser. So our condolences to their family. Thank you, Mayor.
You bet. Now, certainly, I appreciate how hard we're working you, but I'm not sure if you should be complimented for giving your dad a shout out, or the fact that it's 10:18 on his birthday, and you still haven't reached out to him for happy birthday. So there's two ways.
That's why you got a shout out.
Yeah, yeah. Let's see if you, you know.
Video tape.
Out on the good side on this one. I don't know.
I think he's out of the will, man.
Okay. Next, Madam Clerk.
I have no report, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. All right, let's go with Councilman Russo.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Just to reiterate, somebody else just sent me something saying disappointed that we broke off relations. Well, again, I want to reiterate to my friend Greg, who just texted me, that it says at the end of our resolution that we put in that the mayor read, and I seconded, that we are eager to restart connection with that sister city, if and when this war ends and Russia's conduct becomes, you know, peace. I mean, there is a destructive behavior by the president, the leader of Russia, who's really a dictator. And we have to let people know by any means possible that we're upset with it. So here's the one thing, I know Counselor Cummings said, you know, stick to Moncler issues. Well, we just happen to be the only sister city that I know of with this town. It's a wonderful town. We met the leaders over the years. We recently, like the mayor said, sent a nice letter to them. But gosh, you know, we have to tell them, speak up somehow. Hopefully, we can have a new leader in Russia, like years ago when Russia withdrew from dominating Poland and other countries. This is a fight that's going to go on for a while. And I think this is a real strong message we sent. And when you have a connection with Poland, like I do in my family, there's 3 million refugees that fled to Poland. Poland's really taking the brunt of the burden right now. So I'm glad we did this. And I apologize if anybody thinks we went too far, but Mr. Putin has gone much too far. The other thing I wanted to say is it was a wonderful pancake run that Councilman, Deputy Mayor Herlock and I participated. I got my feet all wet, so I couldn't really do much pancake running. But it was a wonderful event. We all contributed into help Ukraine. Again, the fundraiser at St. James Church, Reverend Melissa Hall and all those folks, and especially my good friend from the Essex Running Club, Jackson Bangs. I want to give him a shout out. He was running everything with the megaphone. But Jackson and I are members of the running club for years in Essex, and he was helping run this nice pancake run. And Bill Herlock really, I think Bill came in first, didn't you, Bill? Or you got some sort of a plate. I just made a donation and had to get off. But it was a great thing that they did at St. James Church. And I want to also say there was a wonderful event down at the Wally Joyce Glenfield Park Fieldhouse with all the different groups came together for a nice fish fry. And I brought home the greatest. I'll tell you, I had the best mac and cheese next to the ones I get at Cafe Mosso, great mac and cheese that we bought for some dinner. And they did a good job of raising money there. So again, thanks to all the tenants and all those who've been working together. I want to give a shout out finally to my friend, our good lawyer in town, Joan Pransky, because she worked so many hours, so hard, along with Mitch Khan. And I apologize to people who think that sometimes I'm too outspoken, but I want to see Wachang Plaza finally resolved after 50 years of effort, starting with the Tolchians, who are family in town, taught at Moncler State, Democratic Committee woman, the author of that article in the New York Times that said they almost got a light there. Not so sure a light itself is going to be a solution, but I'm happy we took a step tonight and thank Mayor Jackson, former Mayor Jackson, as the county administrator, for working with all of us. Because when you've got county roads intersecting with town roads, that's always a problem. But we're going to get it done. Thank you all again for voting for the message we're sending to Russia. Thank you, Mayor.
Sir, Councilman Yakabelis?
Thanks, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things. Deputy Mayor Herlock and I went over to the Max Challenge, I think it was last weekend, which is the business in Acme Shopping Center. That was the most devastated business in Montclair from IDA. They went from getting 10 feet of water, which completely devastated their business, to reopening with a series of grants, government aid, and a whole lot of money that they had to put in themselves. It was just a really great example of resilience. Not only did they survive the pandemic, but then they turned around and had to survive a flood. So I just want to encourage people to support. If you want to, if you want to go somewhere and learn what perseverance and endurance is like, that is the example. So I was really proud to join you, Deputy Mayor, for that. I thought that was a really special event, just being with all those folks who overcame all of that. Also, proud to join you and the mayor for the Upper Montclair Business Association reception a few days before that. Great to see so many new businesses in Upper Montclair as well. Just a testament again to, you know, all the people who want to move here and do business here, that we are doing something right. I know we're getting a ton of outreach in terms of cannabis. So I'm hoping that we could put something out from a statement perspective soon in terms of when we're expecting to have an application and documents to support the application, because we are just getting, obviously, a ton of outreach on that. I do want to say, a couple of us are looking into, and thank you to the law department, the Pilgrim Medical Center, which is the abortion healthcare provider on Bloomfield Avenue. We've received a number of complaints that protesters are standing alongside the doorway, and in some cases, impeding entry and exit. So we are looking into what the case law is around in terms of creating some perimeter. There's some, you know, places that have tried doing at least an eight feet or eight foot perimeter around the door there to stop the protesters from being right there on top of people as they're going in and out. And so I know we're looking at what the case law is on that and what would actually hold up in a court of law that we might be able to action on on the local level. I also wanted to, you know, acknowledge everybody. I think raising the Ukrainian flag over Montclair was something that was received particularly well. So thank you, everybody, for doing that. And I'm going to just quickly read you a letter that somebody sent to me, because I think, and listen to this, because this is why, you know, even when we do symbolic things, why they matter. "I'm a first generation Ukrainian-American and Montclair resident. My parents came to the US after World War II. Their homeland, Ukraine, was under the oppression of Soviet rule, and there was no going back. They became proud naturalized citizens of this country, and they made certain that I never took for granted the gift of democracy and freedom that this country offered. They knew all too well it could be taken away in a heartbeat. And so as the people of Ukraine now fight to retain their own hard-won democracy, I want to thank you all for your support and your efforts on behalf of Ukraine. Thank you for spearheading the fundraiser for Ukraine relief, and thank you for standing with Ukraine and raising her flag here in Montclair." So I just thought that was a really lovely note from a Ukrainian Monclerian to all of us, thanking us for something that is symbolic, but really important. And with that, I'm concluding my comments. Thank you.
Counselor Yakabelis, you may not have to go too far back to find case law. I think it was late 90s or early 2000s. I believe that protesters had to be across Bloomfield Avenue in front of the Wellmont. So, Mr. Burr, if you could take a look, in regards to the enforcement of protesters in front of Pilgrim, I believe.
We're taking a look. Mr. Yakabelis asked us a question, and he sent us some updated case law relating to another township.
There may be a ordinance here, late 90s, early 2000s.
Yeah, so we'll get that done.
You got it. Okay.
Thank you. I think, I think to the deputy manager's point, too, I think there's this state statute on that, too. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of guidance. With that, moving to Council, Councilman Cummings.
Thank you, Mayor. For those residents interested, tomorrow, I'm going to have a meeting at the Wally Choice Community Center to talk about the field renovations at Glenfield Park, specifically the potential of having lights added to the field. I think it's something that the residents need to be aware of, as they will be impacted by the increased use of such field. Did have a conversation with Joe D. about this, to let him know, you know, similar to how he made adjustments with the Wally Choice Community Center, when the community was able to present their, their concerns. This may be a similar thing. I want to also follow up on Deputy Manager's acknowledgement of Mayor Bowser, another great leader, specifically an African American man who led and also brought others up with him, and not just in New Jersey. Proud member of the Men of Essex organization that I'm a part of, and we do more, and acknowledge the significance he's had in terms of folks coming up the ladder behind him. Something for staff to look into, and this is from inquiries that I've had, we really need to look at what we're going to be doing in summer camps. Nishuang, Glenfield, and Essex will all be undergoing some renovations during the summer, starting in the spring. Mr. Wood indicated he's thinking about, you know, trying to do it in a staggered format. But I know Michelle wants to make sure that she understands that we kind of got to figure out what we're going to do with our summer camp, specifically the Township Summer Camp. I think that is something like, one of those things where we'll get to May or June, it's like, what are you guys doing? Well, I'm bringing this up now, so that we can actively start to think about some things that we need to do, have conversations with grassroots already, look at some particular locations in the fourth ward that they may be able to shift to. Counselor Russo, glad you were able to do what you always do, is find a way to show up everywhere in town. Everyone down at the Fish Fry, we're pleased to see you there. I know that you were there in a good spirit. I think what's, what's going on there is a really good grassroots movement that hopefully will make a difference in the town as we move forward. And I'm glad Counselor Yakabelis brought up the cannabis conversation. I've had a couple of inquiries about it. We've all had emails about it. And only thing I caution, similar to when I made the statement, I think we needed to opt out, is that we move judiciously and wisely. And so whatever we come up with in terms of the process, I think it's important that we make sure it's dotted very well. Mr. Burr, I think that's going to heavily follow on you, but I think all counselors should make sure that this one of those things that we're very involved in, as it's going to really have a significant, potentially a significant impact on the community. And I think how we dole out those licenses is we need to be, you know, make sure that we're doing it right. All indications, it's almost like a sin, feels like they're definitely going to get one. But I think we need to make sure that we operate in a manner that is, that the process is fair to all groups. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And certainly, before I turn it over to Councilwoman Price Abrams, your last point on that, I think we're all in uniform in agreement on we want to, and have been, making sure the process is very intentional. Mr. Burr is looking at it very thoroughly, examining all of the towns, and certainly why we may all be hearing a little pushback by some who want to, you know, kind of jump ahead on that. And always conversations to be had, but, but know that everyone is committed, every councilperson I've talked to is committed to making sure it's a thorough process, and we get it right for Montclair. Agreed. Councilwoman Price Abrams?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to just remind folks that the Office of the Attorney General of New Jersey just released a new report indicating, you know, really where spikes in bias incidents in the state. And this has been trending. You know, we know from our own local experience with the creation of groups like AAPI with our own local experience with the creation of groups like AAPI with ongoing kinds of incidents that may affect different members of the community, you know, as we think, even in a place like this, where our intention is sort of, it doesn't feel consistent with who we are, but yet kind of these things creep up everywhere, and it's always to be, you know, solidarity, standing in the space of, and we don't tolerate that. But I really just want to point out that it said preliminary 2020, 2021 numbers showed Asian and transgender people saw the biggest spikes in targeted incidents from 87% to 171%, respectively from 2020. Anti-black incidents constituted 40, almost 40% of all the incidents, the most for any group, while Jewish people were the most commonly targeted religious group. It's, it's just sobering, and it's, it's disturbing. But the state every year does publish this data. It's something to just inform us to double our efforts around combating anything that fuels that kind of mentality. And, you know, leads me to remind the public that we do have, I think, as we might have mentioned earlier, the, I forget quite the name of the grant, but we have the federally funded Office of Criminal Justice sort of Hate Crimes Task Force that is in creation. And I just wonder, Mayor, if we might ask Lieutenant Williams, who I believe was tasked with leading it, if maybe at some point in the coming months, he might prepare some report to offer to the community, you know, perhaps to get at the start of one of our meetings, just how that's being assembled, what it hopes to do, and how we're looking at those issues locally. So that's one thought. The other thing I just want to mention is, you know, we, earlier in the, we're going to maybe forever be in the COVID era, but in the sort of post-COVID moment that we're living in, I just want to remind everybody, as we were very conscious in this sort of height, to support our local community or local businesses in the ways that we so often do. And I was with friends looking to purchase a gift for someone's big birthday, and looking online, and we found it, we found what we need on Church Street. So I think it's really important that we just remember that we've got such an array of offerings in this town. And it's good, it's good for us to kind of just remind, remind ourselves to support and shop local all time of the year.
Mm-hmm.
For now.
Aye.
Good. Excuse me. Thank you. Councilwoman Schlegler.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have a question for the, for Manager Stafford, for the ordinance for Watchong Plaza and the new traffic flow there. So we will have the second reading on April 19. And if it should pass again, how long after that would that, would the new no left turn go into effect?
Well, there would be a 20-day stopgap period unless, of course, the governing body declares an emergency.
Okay.
But that would require county action as well. So.
You took the words out. I was just going to note to Councilwoman that the county meeting is the day after.
Yeah. So, so what will, what will happen, assuming passage, is the clerk's office will send to the county administrator, and actually, Mr. Burr and I have already talked about this, and I'm sure he has a calendar as well, to forward it to the county administrator and the county engineer, so that they're both aware, so that they can have it on the commissioner's agenda. I would imagine they'll have placeholders awaiting our passage.
Oh, perfect. Great. Thank you. A couple of other things I wanted to remind people if they didn't get it, but the police department, the Montclair Police Department issued a statement earlier today for residents to be on the lookout. There have been some thefts of catalytic converters on lots of cars in our town. And the police has, the police have asked if anybody in the middle of the night, or at some odd hour hears a battery-powered saw in their, in front of their house, in their driveways, to contact them immediately. They said there's, it takes about three to five minutes for someone to remove one of those, and they're highly valuable for their scrap metal. So that's, that's why that's been happening. So I hope that residents will be on the alert for something like that. I also would, on a sad note, my condolences to the person who lost their life yesterday on our train tracks. It was, you know, just horribly sad. And I hope that their family and loved ones and friends can get over that. Is, I don't know how you can, but, but that our thoughts are with them and that they are doing the best that they can under those circumstances. On a, another fun note, though, the PBA is having a Easter egg hunt this coming Saturday, April 9, in Edgemont Park. Mr. Bunny will be there. The event is from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And there's prizes and refreshments, and it sounds like lots of fun. And I think the weather's going to be nice on Saturday. So that's Mr. Bunny and the Easter egg hunt from 11:00 to 2:00. I also want to wish everybody, my colleagues, and who's ever still listening, a happy Passover and a happy Easter that's coming up before our next meeting. It's a week from, the Passover is the 15th and 16th of April, and then Sunday the 17th is Easter. So happy holidays to all. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. I meant to say the same.
Okay.
Yes. Excuse me. Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A lot going on, which speaks to the resilience of Montclair and the people of Montclair. As Counselor Yacabellus indicated, the privilege, and I know you were there as well, Mr. Mayor, of attending the Upper Montclair Business Association reception at the lovely venue of the Upper Montclair Women's Club, which was the second or third time now that they've done that, and probably in the last nine months. And it's great to see all the new businesses that have started, despite the pandemic and floods and everything else in between. Also, it was great to attend the MAX Challenge grand reopening. And I have to commend Counselor Yacabellus for the work he did to help get the permits and get things moving along there as well. It was a fun event on Sunday, even though it was raining, for the pancake race to, for funds for Ukraine. And really a good turnout overall. I know Counselor Russo was there as well. And then another great event at the St. Cassians Church last Thursday, had the privilege with two others being sworn into the UNICO Group, which is the Italian-American service organization that does a lot of great things here in town. And I'm also really pleased to report that we have the return of the First Ward Beautification Day. This is something that I started 10 years ago. We had a hiatus, of course, because of COVID, now that the numbers are somewhat under control. April 30, we will have the cleanup date, and we will have locations at Mountainside Park, the Upper Montclair Business Area, Mount Hebron/Buzz Aldrin School, as we have done in the past, working with Mr. Bianco and his department through Mr. Stafford. We will supply the gloves and the bags, as we have, and the pickup of whatever we collect. And look forward to having that restart again. It's been a huge success. We've had hundreds of people participating at like 16 or 17 locations in the first ward. So look forward to that again. And I thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. And thank you to everybody and sharing all the many wonderful things going on around town, many different pieces, I will say. Mr. Deputy Mayor, I was just waiting to see if you were going to slip and fall with that pancake, but you made it through. So, you know, kudos there.
I'm sore today, Mr. I've been sore for the last three days, Mr. Mayor. I'm not going to lie to you.
Yeah, well, you had a good hustle going. You had a good hustle going. So, you know, I just want to quickly say, you know, first and foremost, a big, big thank you to everybody involved, you know, certainly in the, you know, Mayor's Health Challenge, you know, really great, great example of everyone coming together, that wellness challenge that we do, and receiving the recognition again this year. It's really a team effort, a lot of people on staff and otherwise, you know, moving forward with healthy behaviors to help people, you know, get through not only pandemic times, but at any time. And we've received a lot of letters of support and congratulations, whether it be from the New Jersey Healthcare Quality Institute, Clare Moss Medical Center, and others who have noted that once again, we hit that, hit that recognition, and it's an important one. And I know a lot of people put a lot of time into that. So I just wanted to say thank you, especially to a lot of our staff who helped facilitate some of the different programs and pieces. Also wanted to note specifically, you know, just, just two quick things. I think my colleagues have really hit most of it, whether it's events going on in town, you know, UMBU is a great one, and some substantive conversations, I think, also in those meetings, in addition to seeing a lot of businesses there, some new and some veteran businesses, but also, you know, talking about strategies, whether it's be working with chambers of commerce, whether, you know, looking at the structure that the bid has on Bloomfield Avenue and some of the benefits they've, you know, been able to get during this pandemic and more broadly, you know, looking at just ways to serve our small businesses. I know we are all focused on that work. And certainly, I think the conversations always lend themselves to ideas that we can then explore. So it's always great to get together, and it's good to see my colleagues there at that. Also, just want to note, you know, it's been, I'm very appreciative of the fact that even during a pandemic, which, which, you know, is this, this council's term, really, as we've come in, really getting a lot of pieces done. Yes, some of them statements, some of the statements that do matter and make a difference, but a lot of actions as well that make a big difference. I think tonight's a good example of both of those, when we substantively, you know, move forward again on our journey for rank control and affordability in this town. You know, I think it's a testament to, you know, one of the most substantive things taking place in this township in a long time. You know, certainly, we know how many have advocated for a long time with great effort, and certainly championed it with, whether that's Mr. Scott or others. And certainly, I appreciate Joan Pransky, and also, you know, certainly Mitch Khan for being part of that with Tomb and others. And certainly, you know, appreciate that we're able to get together and figure it out at the end with willing partners on the other side. And I think that matters. But it matters in terms of, that does not happen without the actions, I think, of introducing this. Appreciate my previous council colleagues as well. You know, it's been years and years and years of trying, and here we are, right, over the, over the span of two councils, able to kind of get it done here. And we hope to move forward on that for affordability and diversity in our, in our community, while at the same time, taking symbolic actions that do matter in terms of ending our sister city relationship, as I noted before, and certainly as I feel strongly about, you know, when the people of Ukraine are reaching out and asking us to take, you know, certain steps, and we've got an opportunity, given our relationship, to do so. I think that matters as well. And we can show that, we've been showing, we can show, we, you know, walk and chew gum at the same time, if it were, as it were. And I think focusing on a lot of issues in town, but certainly more broadly addressing pieces that need to be addressed as well. But at the core of it, you know, when you talk about, you know, paving streets, you know, mindful of our, of our bond ratings, you know, keeping taxes down, as Councilman Yacabellus noted, you know, from our previous council, I'll note, you know, for two councils ago as well, we also kept that number down. So it's been years and years. And certainly, even during a pandemic, we've been mindful and able to keep that in a manageable place. It's been a challenge, but I'm very proud of the work that, with all my colleagues, we've been able to do and put forward during these difficult times. So a big thank you to everybody involved. Thank you for the continued work and conversations and action. And I know that we'll continue to move forward together on these pieces as well. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
We're moved.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Extensions. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a great night. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Take care.
See you in two weeks.